All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Towne-Cordola Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, June 13, 2017. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll for a moment?
Commissioner Metcalfe.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Friedman. Commissioner Caldera.
Here.
Okay.
All right.
And just a note, I think I've been informed from Commissioner Friedman that obviously we've already discussed as far as Cordera in, she has recused herself from that item, but will be in attendance for the second half of the meeting, so we should, we're going to text her, or she's following along on this livestream or something like that, so she'll be able to join us later on.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So at this point, we always look forward to hearing any public comment from something that is not on the agenda. So if you've got something to speak about that is not part of tonight's meeting, please step up to the microphone and have your say. You have three minutes. Anybody here that's got something to say? I don't see a volunteer. So with that said, we won't have any public comment. We'll close it, and we'll go right through the nonexistent consent calendar and look at our agenda for tonight. So I am going to ask the other commissioners if they're willing to make a motion to move the new hearing for the Town Park Plaza Design Review to the first thing on the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
Second.
All right. Then vote would be?
Okay. Yes, I will call. Commissioner Bundy.
Yes.
Commissioner Caldera.
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalfe.
Yes.
Chairman Chase.
Yes. But Mr. Bundy, you are going to recuse yourself from this? Is that correct?
Yes. As a member of the Board of the Cordera Madera Community Foundation, which supported this project, and who donated to it, I will respectfully recuse myself.
All right, sir. We will send a messenger. So that means that what we will do then is go ahead and hear this new hearing for 498 Tamil Pious Drive, Town Park Plaza. This is a design review application for the construction of a new trellis structure at Town Park Plaza. This was something that went before the Town Council, and the council directed it to come before the Planning Commission. And this is, I'm hoping, a swift item. Mr. Bush is going to make a presentation for this. So you have the floor, Doug.
Thank you. All righty. So to get ourselves situated here, this is a design review application for a new trellis shade structure at the Town Park Plaza, which is just a few blocks from where we are right now, off of Tamil Pious, 498 Tamil Pious, adjacent to the Community Center Building and Cafe Verde. So just to provide a little background, a little history, this is a, taken courtesy of Google, a street view shot from 2008 of the previous structure that was there on the corner, which was used by the town. It was originally used by the sanitation district in the 70s and the 80s, and has seen some evolution since that time. It was deemed unfit for habitation due to, I think, seismic concerns, and ultimately it was demolished, which you see here. I believe this was 2011. And after, since that time, there's been some progress to beautify and transform that And here is a shot from 2015. As you can see, there's been much improvement since that time with the addition of the planter boxes for the olive trees you see planted there, the addition of signage as well, and plenty of places to sit and enjoy the sun there, as well as the opening of the Cafe Verde adjacent there. This is a town-owned property, and much of the improvements that were done were thanks to fundraising efforts of the Cordera Madera Foundation, in addition to funds provided by the town as well. This is the next step in further enhancing that Town Park Plaza. At the time, the improvements you see here were put in, including pavers in the tables and chairs and planter boxes. Foundations were poured in anticipation of a future shade structure which is being proposed tonight. So there are removable pavers there that would accommodate the installation of this new structure. Here is a site plan showing the general location. It would be utilizing the existing tables and chairs. It would be approximately, I think, just over 30 feet long, approximately 10 to 11 feet tall, and would provide clearance from the, both the planter boxes and the sides of the cafe there to provide plenty of room for pedestrians to get through. It would provide an additional shade element to supplement the shade provided by the trees there, and kind of give another option to folks who are enjoying the park and enjoying the plaza there. These are all taken from the plans that were provided to you, renderings provided by the applicant, Polsky-Purlestein Architects. And this, these are the elevations, showing north, southeast, and west, obviously, showing the clearance again, the general height as indicated by the figure here, as well as the placement of the chairs and the tables beneath the structure. Here's another rendering, again, showing the general scale. And here is a rendering also provided in the plans, which show basically how it would fit into that space. The structure would be composed of redwood primarily, and it would be, as shown in the elevations, fairly simple design that would be supplemented by vines that would be planted at the base of each of the columns, and it would be planted directly into the ground. There wouldn't be pots or anything there, and those would be trained to grow over the structure over time to supplement the shading. And this essentially concludes the presentation. Staff believes that the findings can be made here, that this would be an improvement to the site, would further enhance the space, and take it one step further in its progress from its previous state. And believes the findings can be made, and is happy to answer any questions that you have on the project.
Thank you, Doug. Commissioners, Nicolau, do you have any questions for staff about this project?
No questions.
Okay. Phyllis?
Yes, I have just one. It's not the structure itself, it's the vines. Mentions in the staff report would be honeysuckle vines, which are great bee attractors, and I am highly allergic to bee stings, and I don't think, and bees are attracted to food, which people will be eating out there. I don't think it's a good idea to have honeysuckle vines on that trellis. And there has to be another kind of vine that would be, would work much better at that location.
Well, that certainly will require a response from staff at some point here before we...
Well, I think, oh, do we have the applicant here as well?
The applicant is here as well.
Yes, okay. So we'll hear from them, right. So that, but that clearly is an issue. Thank you, Phyllis. Anything else you'd like to ask of staff?
No, I think it looks, everything is fine except for the honeysuckle.
All right. I noticed that it says redwood beams and trellis crossmembers will be stained to reduce UV damage in color and condition over time. Being in the business that I am, so I wonder about the grating of the redwood and the staining of that. There's really only about one or two products that can be used to do that, so I'm not going to specify it, but I will say, for instance, Cabot's graying stain is one of those that is the color of the, and it will prevent damage, and it looks just like grayed redwood instantly and stays that way. So anyway, that's a, in a decent grade of redwood rather than number-two construction common. So with that said, the applicant is here to make a presentation. The architect, yes, please.
Hello? There we go. Thanks. Hi, I'm Rich Purlestein at Polsky-Purlestein Architects, and as Doug mentioned, we've been involved, along with my cohort, Pat Ravazio, since the beginning of the plaza conception. And as Doug described, there was always an intent to have a shade structure eventually. They were, the Community Foundation was able to get funding so that we were able to put the foundations in initially when the plaza was first put in, so as to anticipate not having to tear up the plaza in order to do this later on. So the trellis, again, it's very straightforward, as Doug said, it's fairly simple, and I'm happy to hear that I believe the commissioners can support the structure. I think that Commissioner Metcalfe's question about honeysuckle was a good one. The honeysuckle was the initial suggestion of Brad Ixte, who had volunteered his time for the landscape design of the initial plaza. But I think your point about bees is a very good one, and the real question might be if we can find a flowering vine that is not necessarily a bee-attractive. If not, then I think we would probably look for a vine that's not flowering. There was a vine called Distictus, which I think is maybe trumpet vine, has beautiful orange-red flowers, but I don't know their level of bee attractiveness. We have them by our office. I haven't noticed a lot of bees, but they're beautiful, and they don't seem to throw a lot of debris off. So I guess one possibility, because I know that in terms of scheduling, it would be great if there were an approval tonight, or indications of an approval, if there would be a way to defer off the finalizing of the vine selection, that would probably be ideal.
Well, thank you. Anything else you want to say about either the construction or the lighting, or anything else that you've got out there?
Well, let's see. So I think the lighting was mentioned. We're just proposing low-intensity LED downlights that'd be hidden in the trellis, so not visible from off-site, and really just a low glow. I mean, the evening use in the summertime is probably not going to be very great, because when, you know, there are hours, and this does, the plaza as well as Verde does shut down at a certain point to the benefit of the neighbors across the street. So the lighting is really a secondary aspect, but it's fairly, a fairly minor component. The other thing I would mention, I don't know that there's a Community Foundation person here to speak tonight, but I was told, and just by way of letting the commissioners know, the money is in place for this. The Community Foundation's donating about half of it, and the other half to the tune of about a bit over $30,000 has been donated from the community. They have, I think there've been 47 different donors have donated in, and so it's a 50/50 match between individuals and the Community Foundation.
Yes, I've heard that. Thank you. It's been well supported. So that's your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Unless you have any other questions.
All right. Anyone else a part of the presentation before we go to public comment? No? Okay. So then we will do that. We will open up this item to public comment. For anyone that wants to say so, there, you have three minutes.
Hi, Pat Ravazio. I honor Phyllis's concern about the bees and the honeysuckle, and I would just like to say that I had a really fabulous designer neighbor who installed a gorgeous trumpet vine all along the wall at my house, and luckily, I shared a wall with her. And it's so beautiful, and it does not attract bees, and the best thing is it is deciduous, so the leaves will need cleanup in the fall. But the nice thing is it will open it up so that, because you don't really need shade so much in the wintertime, so I think the trumpet vine would be an excellent thing, and just to help things move along, if you can say trumpet vine or something comparable that doesn't attract bees, that would be a great solution, I think.
Thank you, Pat.
Jane Levinson, Tamil Vista. I just have one thing to say. I go by there occasionally, and I know, I notice, I have noticed, at the end of the formal restaurant and sitting area, there are a bunch of old trees, and on many occasions that I have gone by, I've noticed kids climbing those trees. So I think you want to concern yourself with, kids love to climb. And I also notice that parents don't pay much attention to the kids when they're all there and running around and screaming and carrying on, and that's going to be an attractive nuisance.
Thank you, Jane. Anyone else wish to speak about this issue this time? Seeing none, then we will close the public comment section of this and bring it back up here to the commission. So Nicolau, I'll start with you and your thoughts about the project.
I'd like to concur with staff in the report and the fact that the project should be approved, and I would leave the plant issue with plant expert.
All right. I think we could condition it for that with staff to determine that. Phyllis?
I concur. I don't see any reason to hold up the project. I think while it's being built, they can figure out what the proper vine would be.
I agree. I think it's high time that this thing got built. It is warm out there, and it says, "Fragrant honeysuckle species are known to attract bees, birds, and other wildlife." So we'll leave it to staff then to find a vine that is bee-neutral, shall we say. All right.
We can do that.
All right. Thank you. That said, can someone make a motion regarding this item, please?
Sure.
The motion is here.
All right.
Resolution.
I make a motion to approve design review permit number PL-2017-0067 for the construction of a new trellis structure at the Town Park Plaza located at 498 Tamil Pious Drive, application number 024-141-04, with conditional design recommendations by a plant expert.
That's a respecification of the plant material to be not attractive to bees or other...
That's determined by staff.
Yeah. Yeah. That's determined by staff. This has not come before us again.
Okay.
So that said...
And I shall second that.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Caldera?
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalfe?
Aye.
Chairman Chase?
Aye.
So are there, there are appeal rights, with any?
Following action by the Planning Commission at a public hearing or meeting, any decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed to the Town Council within 10 calendar days. Forms are available at the Planning Department, and a $300 filing fee is required.
Thank you very much. I don't know who to congratulate here, but it's a good thing to go. So would someone fetch Dr. Bundy from the kitchen, unless he can hear?
You're going to give me the impetus to go on the diet, are you?
Thank you, Bob. Now you've got some work to do.
Okay.
All right. So tonight, we have two significant items that we're here to consider. One is the Cordera in rebuild, and the other is the Marin Montessori School. So they're both continued hearings, and just by a show of hands, who's here for the Cordera in and wishes to speak? Okay. And who would be here for Marin Montessori and wishes to speak? All right. So we have a predominance. I think we'll anticipate that when we get to 11 o'clock tonight, we'll decide if we're going to continue, if we're still here. I'm not going to say that we're going to resolve either tonight. I don't know. We'll find out where we go with these things. So I'm going to announce this as it's written on the agenda. This is the Cordera in rebuild. This is a continued public hearing to review all project information, including new information from the applicant in response to commission direction at the May 23, 2017 public hearing, and consideration and possible recommendation to the Cordera Town Council regarding an environmental impact report, and applications for a dual-branded Marriott Hotel, including a 71-room Spring Hill Suites and a 103-room Extended Stay Residence Inn. Applications include a proposed general plan amendment, a zoning ordinance amendment, new preliminary and precise plans, including design review, and a conditional use permit. So this is under the direction of Planning Director Adam Wolf. We are just going to pick up where we left off. There is more information to present. He will do that, and then we will ask questions of staff. We will then go into public comment, and then deliberate, see where we are. So, please.
Great. No, thank you, Chairman Chase, Commissioners. We are continuing the public hearing, as you mentioned. This is picking up essentially where the commission left off at the last meeting on May 23. At that meeting, the commission gave direction to the applicant and to staff, or the applicant to work with staff on answering a couple of questions regarding improvement of the pond, and looking at the access roads around the property, and following up on other items that the commission requested the applicant follow up on. The background is in the staff report. Obviously, we've also have a lot of information from prior meetings. I've included a couple of the prior staff reports without the attachments. All of the information is all, we are continually updating the website to include all the staff reports and public comments that we get. So at the request of the commission, staff did meet with the applicant onsite on June 1st, and importantly, I think, the commission requested that really Jim Martin, our consulting biologist, take the lead on looking, after his comments at the last meeting, looking at this plan again, providing recommendations and comments to the applicant, and sort of letting them respond as they can to those comments. So one of the things that we discussed was trying to increase the size of the pond as much as possible, keeping some of the existing vegetation to the extent possible, and that included, I think, the last plan, there were a bunch of trees that were, actually, most of, not all of the trees were eliminated. So this, we discussed sort of keeping as many that would, could actually be, were actually mature, and sort of could be kept potentially to provide habitat until the smaller trees that were going to be planted grew to maturity. Increasing the side, there's this, I think, Jim can speak to this better than I can, but comments about creating transition zones in the pond itself between uplands and lower water areas, tidal marsh, or not tidal marsh, excuse me, but the wetland areas, and then deeper areas that potentially could support wood and grass. In addition, and I'll let Jim go into this more, actually, the applicant present what they've, what they've actually done to the plan, and they've revised the partial pond restoration plan for your review that's in your packet, and the applicant can go into that in detail. We also met with the Cordera Larkspur Fire Department with regards to the access road around the property, and in discussing that, the fire department does want and does require access completely around the hotel, given, unless it can get direct access from Tamil Vista Boulevard, right at sort of the rear of the property, which is challenging for a number of reasons. Obviously, that's never been part of the plan for the reasons of vehicular traffic and access off of Tamil Vista Boulevard, its effects on the existing residents over there, there's no access there, some of the pedestrian improvements as well, and the grade changes between the actual sidewalk level and what is going to be the new elevation of the site next to it. So that's never, that's not proposed, and therefore, they do require continuous access around the property, primarily because of the three-story nature of the property. They need to get a ladder truck there, and in the case of needing to get out quickly, they would not want to back out a ladder truck and make the turnaround, the hotel, back out to Madera. So that little segment of road is very important to them. They were, I think, obviously realizing the context of the discussion, saw an opportunity to limit the width of the roadway from 26 feet to 16 feet, and that provided a little bit more room for this, the pond that was presented before. And I've also noted that we did request that the applicant look at ways to move, just shift the building itself as much as possible to the south, and they've, I can let the applicant speak to the issues that they discussed in response to that, in terms of moving the building to the south, constrain some of the circulation and the parking, would eliminate some of the landscaping on the south end of the property, and there may be an opportunity, because the Spring Hill Suites building does have those ground floor patios, if you sort of eliminated those, you could move it some distance, but that's not what the applicant desires to do, but I'll let them speak to that more. And that's really, you know, that's sort of the work that we did. I'm happy to answer questions you may have. We did receive public comment on this, included in your packet on Friday, and then followed up with additional public comments that we received, both yesterday and today. Those are before you, on your desks. They're also in the back for public review as well. So this evening, this is really following, trying to facilitate the direction between the commission and the applicant that happened at the last meeting, and the meeting before, continuing that, and we are awaiting further direction. Staff is, further direction from the commission about what it wishes to do after hearing from the applicant, and understanding whether or not they are meeting your expectations, criteria for moving this forward. So I'll leave it there. Happy to answer questions, and if you have any.
So my first question to you is, after we asked questions of you, did you want to have Mr. Martin make any presentation or go directly to the applicant?
Well, it depends if the applicant, I'm not sure. I know, obviously, Garrett Grealish is here for the applicant. I don't know if they, he intends to have a presentation by his biologist on the restoration plan, in which we could respond, or if, how they intended to do that, frankly. So I'm not sure.
We'll ask. We'll find out shortly.
But we can, we're happy to, Jim's happy to sort of comment on it as well, at your request.
Yes.
Whenever you'd like, so up to you.
All right. Well, at this moment, then, if you're ready, then I'll ask the other commissioners if they have any questions of you before we go talking to the applicant. Are you ready for, is there anything else you want to present to us right now before we do that?
No.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, Phyllis, do you have any questions of Adam or staff before we hear from Garrett? I presume he would like to make a presentation.
No, I do not.
Okay. Dr. Bundy?
No.
All right. Nicolau?
I do. I have two questions, and there are more for record for us tonight. One is specifically regarding some statements that were sent to us, and one of the statements specifically was stating that the project does not meet CEQA and/or not approval by the Army Corps of Engineers. And this is one question. If, you can give me your thoughts about this. And the second one, if the staff... And the second one, if the staff team can state where, on the record, if their opinion is that the current status of the, the current biological and natural habitat status of the current pond could be defined as damaged, neglected, poor, or kind of functioning well.
Okay. So on the first one, I think you're referencing some of the comments that we received, public comment that we received recently. It's been a common refrain from public comments. There's two aspects to this. One is, one is, does it meet SEQA or not? And I will say first off, up to this point, we haven't incorporated any of the proposed changes into any new project look at SEQA. So we would have to do that if, if that's the direction the Commission wants to go and direct us to do that. Up until the changes in the proposed project, we believe that we have conducted a very thorough environmental analysis that meets all the requirements of SEQA. So that's, that's staff's position. As to the Army Corps, there have been a number of comments made that, that say this does not meet Army Corps or Regional Water Board requirements. I find it hard for, the only, the only people who can really tell us that frankly are those agencies. We, that was one of the reasons why we had a member or the reviewing agency at our April 11th meeting was to hear directly from, in that case, the Regional Water Board. And they specifically said they cannot give water, I think it was, I think a water quality certification until SEQA has been completed by the town. They did say the only one thing they could do before that was deny the project. They did not do that. They said it was incomplete. So I think those are comments that are expressing an opinion, in my view, of the criteria that those agencies should use. But I don't believe those, that determination has been made and can't be made at this time.
Thank you. And then the other?
Oh. I mean, some of this about the biology of the pond, that was in the recirculated document. I think there was a lot of information, working with Jim Martin, obviously, in terms of evaluating the existing biology. I think there's obviously habitat there, and I think it was disclosed, there's obviously the widgeon grass and I think they're described as sensitive natural community, community types. There are some wetland areas there. At the same time, I think those areas, as I understand, and Jim, you can supplement this as you see fit, but could be improved and enhanced through water circulate, improved water circulation, there, you know, different types of planting that are native and upland areas. And so there is clearly some room for improvement out there at the existing pond or with some retention of the pond, even in that, in that example. So it's not, you know, there's, and it's all, I think, described in the recirculated EIR number two, goes into, I think, great length. And in addition, many of the responses to comments, it goes into a lot of information about and qualifies, I think, that the existing environmental quality of that, of that pond. So I can, we can refer specific sections there if need be, but it's been well documented.
Thank you.
I'm happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do recall that one of the discussions we had with Mr. Martin and in general was that the quality of the pond could not be a saltwater body, and it couldn't be a freshwater body. It has to be brackish to support what's there to some extent. Is that a first statement or a huge generalization?
Yeah.
That's, you know, so, but we couldn't take it to one extreme or the other without impacting what is there as habitat.
Right.
So that is the genesis of trying to find a pond design that would contribute to maintaining the quality of habitat that's there and improving it, I think, would be a simple statement at this point. So after hearing that, do you guys have any other questions for staff? Okay. So Garrett, I would like to hear your side of the presentation.
Here we go. Sorry. All right, well, this is, yeah, I should mention, this is where, we're the guinea pigs for these screens that were, that were, this new technology that was sort of a, this is today, they were installed today, actually, so. Yeah, it won't work on the screen.
It doesn't work.
Yeah, you can.
It worked when you were right, pointing it right in front of it.
But with the microphone? You can pull the mic out too and walk up to it if you want to.
I will, one of the advantages, while maybe the laser pointer doesn't actually work, this does, you can see it on both sides. And I think we can move it up a little bit too.
Everybody say.
Yeah, we can look over there.
Everybody say wow all at once. So.
But this doesn't work, right?
There's the mouse.
I think that was Peter using the one he has.
This doesn't, yeah, this won't register on the screen.
Okay, well, if I can stand here, I can point stuff out, maybe that's okay. Okay, good evening. My name is Garrett Greeloo with Renaissance Hotels. What I was hoping to do today, tonight, based on direction from our last meeting, is to really address two topics, one being the pond, really the main topic, and also the hotel entrance. Here is the pond restoration plan we presented at our last meeting. At that meeting, there were some concerns expressed. Adam mentioned some of them. The first one was that limited landscaping provided around the pond. In this area here, you can see the water is really pushed to the outer edges. There was also some concern raised about sort of the lack of public engagement with the space and the lack of connection to the hotel. There was a desire to increase the pond area if possible, and some comments and a desire to retain more trees and to create more diversity in the plant types. In response to that, we made a number of changes. Adam alluded to some of them earlier. One of the first things we did after meeting with the fire department is to decrease the width of the access road from 26 feet to 16 feet. That allowed us to expand the pond 10 feet towards the building. We also eliminated this emergency access here with permission from the fire department. That allowed us to expand the landscape area to the west. And then down here in this part of the site, we moved the water's edge, from the outside edge we had proposed here, back to the original shoreline. The dotted line represents the shoreline of the current pond. By doing that, that allowed us to retain the existing berm in through here with mature pine trees. We also extended the landscape area down through this section here, and we eliminated six parking stalls. So we're able to keep the berm in this whole area here along with the mature trees. We also brought back the existing path, which sort of comes across here and around the site. We'd be replacing that path with a new path, of course, but it would be in roughly the same location. So here's the revised plan based on all those changes. You can see up in this corner here, we've added a little redwood community with related plant types. That's also an area where we'd have a cascading water feature into the pond. This road has been narrowed here. We've added some willow trees in this area to provide shade to the pond, which would help with water temperature, help to control that. In this area here, this is the existing berm, and these trees here are the existing pine trees. Those would be retained, and we supplement those with some coastal live oaks in through this section here. The path would be retained and actually replaced roughly in the same area it is right now. And we go ahead and connect that to the hotel sidewalk across the other side. We'd add a bench in this area here, it would be on the western side of the berm, so you wouldn't see the freeway noise and allow you to look out in this direction over the pond. We'd also add some signage along the pathway, sort of describing the biology of the pond. On the northern section, we proposed to add some willow trees. That apparently would provide some nice shade in that area. And then in terms of existing trees, there's a number of Brazilian peppers in through this area that represented here, here, and over here. Those are mature trees, they're not ideal for this location, but because they are mature, we would go ahead and retain those, but supplement them with other trees, coastal live oaks and possibly grape myrtles. In terms of the pond itself, there's this wetland area here existing, kind of a wetland marshy area. We'd go ahead and expand that and improve the quality of that area, and we'd repeat that in these two corners here and here. And then finally, we'd go ahead and dredge the pond in the center to allow or encourage really widgeon grass and go ahead and plant a substrate of widgeon grass in that area to encourage growth. Okay. So in terms of water quality, water quality, as I understand it, is really critical to the long-term health of the pond. And we've done a lot of work in this area, recognize we still have a bit more to do. But at this point, we've consulted with an engineer who's designed for us an aeration system. We're told that aeration is, a system is really the most effective way to oxygenate the water. The system would have two diffusers placed here and here. It would be provided by a company called Airmax. They're a, the world's largest manufacturer of aeration systems. They have indicated to us that the system they have spec, it's called an SW 20 system, I believe, which should cover an area of about a half an acre of shallow water. And should, the system as designed here would provide 14.2 turns per day, which according to Airmax, would be sufficient to provide a healthy environment to the pond. We do recognize we have some more work to do here. Jim Martin has asked us to consult with a professional. We've identified a person that can help us with this. It's a woman from Advanced Aquatic Solutions. I'm actually going to meet with her tomorrow onsite. She's going to take a look at this plan and provide some overall quality comments on water quality. In addition to aeration system, we've been providing, as I mentioned earlier, sort of a cascading waterfall here. That would provide some additional circulation and aeration to the pond. It's currently designed with an oversized pump. We recognize it needs to be smaller, exactly how much smaller, we're not too sure, but it clearly needs to be dialed down. That would be one of the questions that I would ask of the professional tomorrow. Okay, so here's the overall revised plan with the new pond. What I wanted to point out here was that with the extension of the berm through this area, I think we've done a nice job creating a nice sort of landscape barrier between Highway 101 and the site, similar to what's there right now. So as you're traveling 101 on the side, you really won't see much of the property until you get really down to this area as you're traveling 101 south. In terms of moving the building farther south, I know Adam had asked about that earlier, we did took a look at this. We've actually moved it as far south as possible. There's a number of constraints here. In order for us to get the two rows of parking here, in order for us to have the balconies or the patios here that were requested by the Commission at a past meeting, and even just small landscaping here separating the guest rooms from the, from the parking stalls, it's really about as far south as it could go. If we were to eliminate the patios, we might be able to push the building another foot or two south. I'm not sure if that's really worth it, but it's something we could look into if the Commission would like to go that direction. Okay, the porticoche, here's the original entrance to the hotel that we proposed. You can see the porticoche is actually on two levels, two planes here, this plane there, and it had a rounded shape with rounded windows mirrored in the back. There was some concern expressed about that. Last meeting, we presented a different shape here. You can see it's a sort of a peaked shape that's attempting to mirror the Craftsman architecture, again at two planes though. Last meeting, we received some feedback that it would be preferable to have the entire porticoche on a single plane. So we've done that in this rendering here, a single plane. In addition, we made a few more changes that were not part of our submittal last week that I wanted to point out to you. One of the things we did is we eliminated the round windows that were across here. Secondly, we extended, we made the porticoche wider, extended it 30 inches out in each direction, and it reduced the pitch a bit to make it appear a little shorter and a little wider. And then finally, we added some lighting. You can see, these are just sort of placeholders here for lightings, this fixture is having specified at this point, but we would propose to provide lighting there and also LED lighting on the inside of the beams of the porticoche. We also have this version, this single plane version with the existing design as an alternate. We're comfortable with either direction. So that's, that's the information I planned to present this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. I think it's now up to us to ask Mr. Martin about this pond plan and so forth, and where it stands in your opinion and where it needs to go, if anywhere, and so forth. So you get a seat at the table.
You can do this one. If he talks for too long, he's kind of out of the... You wanted me to summarize, put in my words?
Say again, yeah. So what we got was a packet that showed changes to the plan that included the edge of the pan, enlargement of the pond, new elements along the edges. It still has the Gabion wall system there, and yet this aeration system and the design of the water quality, I think, is where the expertise falls to you to see if this pond design works to create a habitat.
Okay. So I think the larger point first is this project will still have significant impacts on jurisdictional waters and habitat, to be very clear. They're disturbing basically the entire footprint of the existing pond. Two-thirds of it's going to be eliminated. The idea is to restore and enhance this third of the pond. They'll still be required to do off-site mitigation as part of this proportionally reduced. So I did meet with Adam and the applicant's biologist and the applicant on June 1st, and we went over the points that I raised at the last study session about the challenges that I found in the current design of this redesign, the limited buffer around the perimeter of the pond, and some of the other complications. And these are all steps in the right direction, providing, maintaining the existing edge through here, creating more wetland, not just in these pockets, but actually around the entire perimeter, is the five-foot shelf that would be installed. That would improve the wetland habitat in the pond. Right now, the actual wetland habitat is very limited, it's about 500 square feet at this very edge here. So creating these emergent wetlands will improve... So creating these emergent wetlands will improve the complexity of this feature and improve the natural water quality filtration that occurs with wetland vegetation. One of the big challenges with what we described as limited habitat value with the pond is water quality. It's physical and hydrologic isolation, it's relative small size, and the fact that it's surrounded by development and separated by a freeway from other waters and wetland of shorebird marsh. This proposal magnifies those challenges, but in response, they're also working to improve water quality through this circulation design and through the natural wetlands that would be established around the perimeter. So those are steps in the right direction. Zentner and Zentner, the applicant's biologist, has updated their habitat enhancement plan and provided additional information about how that's going to be accomplished. The original enhancement plan didn't really touch on those things, didn't really touch on how and where the wetlands were going to be created, didn't even acknowledge how widgeon grass was going to be incorporated into this design. So they've made steps in the right direction. They do now acknowledge one of the goals is to create pond area that's a sufficient depth to support widgeon grass, but this current plan still doesn't describe how that's going to be accomplished, and it doesn't have the performance standards, success criteria, and contingency measures if and when that doesn't work. And that's true for some other aspects of the maintenance and monitoring. There's more to be flushed out in the design. That's not unusual in a review process, including the environmental review process, to have a draft or conceptual plan and understand it's going to have to go through the regulatory agency review and presumably approval process. They're going to say yes or no in terms of its adequacy and sufficiency. They're going to want to see other things addressed. One of the points that I raised in the last study session was the concern over this gabion wall and my experience, the resistance the regional board has to that kind of structure, and the likelihood that through that permit process, they're going to say, no, that's not going to work. It doesn't mean this couldn't move forward. It doesn't mean that the regional board would completely reject it. They may, in fact, say, you know, create a slope here, which reduces the footprint of the pond habitat and would increase the off-site mitigation requirement the applicant would have to meet. At this point, that's all conjecture. We're assuming where it might go with the regional board. We have qualifiers in the current mitigation that this project isn't going to move forward until they satisfy the regulatory agency permit process, and that those requirements be incorporated into whatever form the project takes and the mitigation takes. So the regulatory agencies would look at this. They would have their input. They would have the authority to review or reject and approve or reject it. Again, it's definitely a step in the right direction. The circulation approach with establishing wetlands around the perimeter and improving aeration, basically sucking in air here and having these bubblers that come up and bring oxygen into the pond, and then pump water up through the cascade system. It really wasn't what I was hoping for. I wanted a qualified hydrologist and wetland specialist to look at this pond, to look at the challenges with it, its existing challenges about the poor water quality and circulation, and make some assurance to the planning commission that they could work with the appropriate engineers and make sure that a system was in place that would be appropriate for something of this size, that it wouldn't be designed exclusively to address aesthetics and nuisance conditions, because those don't always mesh with biological habitat values, that whatever was designed was designed with a primary function of biology and habitat improvement, water quality and habitat. The current engineering design seems to be skewed toward the idea of improving circulation and reducing nuisance conditions in the pond. So I pointed that out to the applicant and the applicant's biologist. Their current proposal is to move half the volume of this pond every day. That's a lot of water and a big challenge just to accomplish. So they understand that that's not appropriate for what we're looking at here, that it has to be revised and the system has to be developed that respects the goal of enhancing habitat values in the pond. I believe it's attainable. It requires the appropriate design, and my recommendation was to continue to push the applicant in the direction of getting there and having that plan reviewed by an independent hydrologist and habitat specialist as part of the further review and approval process of the city, of the town. I think that kind of touches on most of the issues.
It puts a circle around the pond, in a big way. I have a number of questions, but I will go to the other commissioners and ask them if they have questions for you. Nicolo, do you have something you want to start with, or Mr. Martin?
I'm a little confused about my own questions, so. How do you think that? So maybe the physical aspect of the proposal maybe can work as long as certain values, levels are achieved. Can you say so? Yes.
Yeah, if you have water and you have the appropriate zonation and elevation around that feature, you're going to get the plants that you want established, as long as you've got the water and the substrate. So one of the challenges with the current pond is there's very little elevation that will support the emergent vegetation. That's important for natural filtration. So this current design creates these terraces here and around the perimeter to improve the amount of wetland in proportion to the open water on the pond. So, yeah, this is not an impossible challenge to, this is a professional science now for designing this overseeing construction and monitoring it for an extended period of time to satisfy the regulatory agencies. If the regulatory agencies aren't satisfied that this didn't work for whatever reason, the applicant's on the hook to fix it. And one of the things they're going to be looking for in their approval process are contingency measures if there is a challenge with the water quality, with the plants not getting established or dying off. So those would all have to be addressed as part of that approval process with the regulatory agencies.
Got it. Okay. So who or how would the levels or the thresholds or the goals be established? Who would do so? We need that many such and such.
Plans, right. So the applicant has, the applicant's consultant has proposed planting densities and numbers. They've got preliminary information on maintenance and monitoring. That is reviewed. I've provided comments even tonight on whether that's sufficient or not. They still have a ways to go. We can lay some of that out as part of our SECO review. It will also go through the regulatory agency review process. They'll look at the whole plan. If this moves forward, if the agencies are willing to accept this as part of the mitigation proposal of the applicant, they will look at all those performance standards, success criteria, and contingency measures, and reporting obligations of the applicant, and make sure that they are in agreement that they're sufficient to address the issue and ensure success. That's what they do, and that's part of their review capacity.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
That's it for now, Nicolo?
Yes.
All right. Phillips, any questions?
Not at this time.
Dr. Bundy.
Yeah, Jim, thanks for your comments. One thing that I think of when trying to do this small pond like this that enhances habitat for wildlife is to somewhat limit access to people. And I would question why we would put a sidewalk in that would potentially disturb the wildlife when we could use that area for additional plantings.
Right.
The other issue that I'm pleased that you were able to, Garrett was able to reduce the size of the circular roadway there, but that still means there's a lot of traffic that's going through there. And I would ask the fire department if they would accept a pervious surface, such as a grass, that would be blocked off, not blocked off necessarily, but not have access to routine traffic going through there, but would only be used by the fire truck, but, yeah, but would otherwise be natural grass, a natural environment, but it would be maintained as a fire road. I would see that as a desirable feature on it. Also, the black-crowned nightherons, which everybody enjoys seeing when they're there, they're going to leave with construction, and they're going to leave with the loss of the trees. And so I would think the goal would be to plant trees that would be potential black-crowned nightheron habitat for a day roost in the future. And Audubon suggests maybe redwood isn't the right choice for that. The black-crowned nightheron day roost that I've seen have all been in eucalyptus trees, which the fire department doesn't like, and the Audubon Society doesn't like, but the black-crowned nightherons really do seem to like that. And so I would see that as a sort of a long-term goal if this pond is eventually permitted. The other concern that I had was just the maintaining of water level in the pond. Right now, we're dependent on Lagoon 1, which is a detention pond for flood protection because it's a larger watershed area over there. This is no longer needed for that purpose, but what about the possibility of putting a slide gate on the culvert that connects with Lagoon 1 up there?
Up here.
Yeah. And, you know, maintain that closed most of the time, but only open it up when you wanted to flush in fresher water when Lagoon 1 was full. So those are my thoughts on what I would like to see addressed on that.
Okay. So I'll maybe go in reverse order here and remind me if I've missed something.
Okay.
So with regard to the culvert coming through here, the idea is to deepen the pond in this area. One of the problems when that water level drops is the elevation, surface elevation of the pond drops. And that's great short term, but long term, it just ends up being dried mud flat. So the, especially with this smaller area, the goal and design intent is to deepen this area here to improve circulation as it comes from Lagoon 1. And as those elevations drop, it would still retain the deeper water in the pond that would support the widgeon grass. That's the goal. Some of the shoreline, the wetland vegetation would be exposed during those periods, just as this small area of wetland is right now. The applicant's biologist did explore, as we've talked about before, the idea of improving circulation by opening this gate here that connects under the freeway to shorebird marsh. And there are all kinds of challenges with elevation there that I think we've discussed They could look at this, the idea of doing some control on Lagoon 1. It might be a good idea just to have that as a backup. My concern is this is relatively level in a long distance over to Lagoon 1. If you've got some kind of control on that outlet, the likelihood is you're going to have muck, silt, and material accumulating in that. It's already a compromised capacity coming out of that culvert, and you start controlling it and don't pay attention over time, and eventually you could have a connection that's completely or largely obstructed, and then you've got a mess to deal with. But it's certainly something that could be investigated if that would serve to improve and give greater control as part of an active management plan for surface elevations in the pond.
Jim, the reason I was thinking of keeping it closed when the Lagoon 1 was going to be dropped is that the only time that I really see much in the way of shorebirds there is when the pond level is low, and you're creating these ledges around the edge, and if those are covered with water, that's going to provide good habitat for potential waiting shorebirds. I was looking at the flood control budget, and they do have an ongoing proposal to clean that culvert every few years of the muck that potentially builds up. I would see the slide gate or gate valve of some kind as being open whenever Lagoon 1 was full, which is, you know, most of the summer.
Okay. I'd certainly something that could be explored and easily retrofitted if it provides some improvement to habitat value without creating a future risk to function of that culvert. You also mentioned black-crowned nightheron in the current day roost. So that, those roost trees are primarily down in this area and would all be coming out. And one of the things that we discussed back in the meeting on June 1st was how to try to retain some of the vegetation. I've actually seen black-crowned nightheron roosting in a couple of the pine trees here and even in some of the dead pines up on this end. I haven't seen them in this dense vegetation here or along this edge here. The idea was to keep some of that taller structure available as replacement plantings come in, and hopefully if this is in fact a better attractive feature and actually can support fish in the future, it may draw the birds, certainly other roosting birds sooner. There's really no way to predict that. We talked about eucalyptus and the other non-natives that grow fast and tend to provide good substrate for roosting. And obviously, there are challenges around it. We don't have a lot of room. You're then, you know, those trees are then going to compromise the idea of trying to enhance the native component around the perimeter. But one thing we did come up with is installing willows around the upper edges of the pond. The black-crowned day roost at Aquatic Park in Berkeley is all willow, dense, it's got to be dense cover, preferably on or near the water. So the idea was to get those installed so that they would hang out over the water and provide some secure roosting habitat. Your point about mixing people and the attempt to enhance habitat is a good one. There really isn't a lot of, you know, we're talking feet in separation here. So any animal using this pond, and to some degree even the existing pond, has acclimated to the human activity around it, to people walking on this path, to people in the hotel rooms or in the patio area where the barbecue is. Those birds have acclimated over time. And presumably, when these replacement trees and vegetation get large enough and dense enough, and the birds have adjusted to activity, whatever that may be in the future around the pond, they'll basically acclimate to whatever's going on there. I don't see the benefit of keeping humans off of a path that's here right now. I don't see the benefit of keeping humans off of a path that's here right now high enough to attempt to exclude people from this area. I think you're going to have a tendency for people to want to use it. It's a path there now. Every time I've been out there, there have been people using that pathway. So I think it would end up being a challenge to remove it and then try to restrict people from using it. It certainly would provide an opportunity, especially in this upland area, for more secure habitat. It's the broadest area. One of the problems with this vegetation here, though, is their freeway sign is right here. So this is really critical for the southbound traffic and their identification sign. So the idea of getting really tall trees, even the height of the existing eucalyptus out there is at minimum a challenge here. They're not going to want to see something that tall through here. Something taller could be planted down here. You've got a parking lot, you know, to the north here. You're constrained with what you can do in this footprint.
And I can respond to the fire department. I did speak with the fire department about, maybe not asphalt or concrete, on that. They do want something that clearly can grip, they can grip on. I'm not sure grass is going to be acceptable, especially if you start getting muddy surface or something like that. But potentially, some permeable surface could work. They're reluctant, but it's something we can explore further with them if that works. And then restricting access, again, it becomes more of a, are you really getting the benefit of it? But, and the applicant probably have something that would want to comment on that as well. But that's something that you can, could be explored. It's just, I don't think you're going to get where it's going to be a natural surface.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, the only other thought, I think the willows could be a good thought. I mean, they're similar to this ironbark eucalyptus in their sort of shape and the density of foliage. Would that be a better choice than the redwoods, as maybe suggested by Audubon?
Yeah, up through this area. You know, the redwoods are pretty isolated up here, and they will eventually, just as the redwoods, the existing redwoods down here, they will provide some vertical structure there. You know, as, my opinion, as long as there's some option around the perimeter with willow and other vegetation that hangs over or near the pond, you know, I would, I would not see the need to take out the redwoods and put willows through there as an alternative. I think aesthetically, you know, it's, I assume that's probably what the applicant's goal is, to provide some aesthetic treatment there.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Jim, a couple of questions for you. So would you repeat for me what the approximate square footage is of this pond? Do you recall or?
It's about 10, of this one, it's about 10,000.
10,000, okay. So in terms of process of mitigation and what we're trying to do here, they've purchased this 1.2 acres and they need a .08 acre, according to documents.
That's their deficit. If, that's their deficit if the entire pond was filled.
So .08 is 3,400 square feet. So in other words, then if this pond were to become an acceptable wetland, it would exceed the missing element of mitigation.
Correct.
All right. So having built ponds, I know it can be done, and this is not the design to do it. So we know that. I think we're at a point, if it were to be a pond, it needs to be altered in design, and it can have that. Right now, there is that small northern portion of wetland, and that the idea would be to create a greater degree of wetland and habitat all around it. So if this became that, it would be adequate. If, if it is a design, it must be recirculated as part of CECL, if this is a, to be submitted as part of the mitigation.
How about Adam Addick?
Yeah, I mean, it's something we'd have to look at. It's not something that's been determined yet.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't know why that went off. But that would be something, if we got direction from the commission that that's, again, wanted to move forward, we would get on it as quickly as possible.
Right.
And, I mean, we've done some, starting to think about it, but we haven't really come to any final conclusions on that.
So that is to be determined. It would satisfy any remainder of mitigation. That said, that if we said this pond cannot be disturbed, I think that the applicant would have the right to leave the pond as is. Is that not a fair statement?
Sorry, say that again.
If we chose to adopt an alternative option.
Yep.
Then the pond does, nothing would have to happen to that pond right now.
Correct.
It can be left as is.
Well, I mean, we haven't analyzed it in that regard, but my understanding is if that's not touched in any way, the existing pond, then there's no required mitigation for it.
Right. So it would stay.
Right, there would be no jurisdictional authority if the pond's totally avoided.
Right. So a pond that looks like it does now, functions as it does now, relative to an enhanced pond is the comparison, really, what I'm thinking about when I see this pond versus the existing pond. So you either get a better, larger pond than, of more.
Enhanced.
Environment than what we have out there now.
Yeah, part of that would depend on the alternative footprint, you know, and what happens to the vegetation around the pond? And what happens to the roost trees for black-crowned night heron, you know, how far, if that existing pond were retained, you know, what would happen during construction? Most likely, those birds would go elsewhere. But if those trees could be retained, they would come back sooner, most likely, depending on the design. So there are some variables depending on what the upland treatment is for the design. Even if the pond is avoided, it's still going to have some effect. But I think that your point is there's an opportunity to actually enhance values with the treatment that's being considered under this redesigned pond.
Right.
Right? So then there's a trade-off in the reduction of size. So there's, in terms of the jurisdictional review, they're going, they would expect an extensive enhancement, similar to what's being considered here. And they would look on a quantitative basis, you know, what's the square foot of the area being affected? What's the square footage of the habitat that's being redesigned or created or replaced? And use that square footage as a basis for their evaluation. But obviously, this, you know, this pond's, this redesigned pond would be a much smaller feature.
So in your response to the applicant's design, you made some notations about what would need to happen, what needs to be looked at, but a further sort of paper directing what steps would need to be taken to get to this complete design could be done.
Level of acceptability, yes.
Yes, okay. There's so many issues that keep getting brought up. I said at the last meeting that fireplace, or fire department drive can be a greenery. We've done several of these where they're green. You can't tell that they actually support.
Grasscrete.
A 70,000 pound truck out there, and they do. And the fire trucks are fine with it. So it can be green, walkable. Gaven walls can be done with stainless steel mesh so they don't rust away. I've seen them survive the San Lorenzo River flood in stainless steel. So there's many ways to skin the cat here if so. There's so many comments about this. But I think that we've got a good idea of where it needs to go, and we have to consider that up here with us. Anything else that you want to add? Okay, you've talked quite a bit. All right.
Okay.
No other commission questions for Mr. Martin?
I just have one since we're talking about the birds leaving during construction. If the herons do not come back, are there other birds that can be attracted that would take their place? I mean, almost like an evolutionary thing.
Yeah, I'm not sure taking their place was the right term, but I understand your point. Yeah.
If the night herons no longer like us and don't want to be around, are there other birds that may want to be around?
Yeah. Well, I mean, the pond is, even the existing pond is utilized by a large number of species. It's one of the things that we reviewed in the EIR sections. And so if you create the habitat, you will get birds that come and use it. And I think whether there is a day roost in the trees in the future by black-crowned night heron, you will get black-crowned night heron coming and foraging in these areas, just as they do occasionally in the pond now. The question is whether, you know, they're going to come and use the trees eventually for a day roost.
You also mentioned the possibility of fish. Would that mean seeding the pond to get the fish, to get fish there or?
Yeah, the applicant's biologist didn't suggest that. It's certainly something that could be looked at, what would be appropriate species to try to get a, native species to get established here, and that would be successful. So that is something that could be explored further as this moves forward and as the monitoring demonstrates that the habitat conditions are suitable. It's going to take a while for the emergent vegetation to get established, for the pond sediment levels to fall out before you'd even want to introduce fish or other aquatic life into the pond. But it's certainly something that could be explored and included as part of the requirements for the applicant.
And just one more question. You mentioned you thought the applicant should hire an independent hydrologist and another thing, I didn't catch the second one.
Habitat restoration specialist.
Thank you.
To look at the circulation design and make sure that its purpose and function is for habitat values, not solely aesthetics and nuisance conditions, which a lot of times you get an engineer that does a plan like the one that was prepared for the applicant.
Stupor thrower.
Right. And their focus really is around engineering and aesthetics.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. Bob, Nicolau? All right.
Thank you.
So thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. Anything else the staff wants to throw at us? All right. So we're going to open this up for public comment at this time. I do want to preface this with a couple of notes. One, you've got three minutes. We're going to time you, and I ask that you be very precise about that. Many people have said things before already. We do know what your comments are. Please try not to repeat each other. I think that we've got a fair number of people that would like to speak. And then we're going to consider here at the commission level what we'd like to do. I don't want to run this past 10 so that we can get to Marin Montessori. So I think that we would stop it there.
At what point are we going to discuss the entry design and the portico share?
Is there, are there questions you want to ask of Garrett regarding this?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Is this the time?
We should do that before we go to public comment, yeah.
And fortunately, you know, I don't have a copy of that latest, that, no, I don't like that realm, won't you know that? Looking at that and what you've done, and it's an improvement, I'm glad you're showing the lighting and the downlights. I mean, is this the time where I say that I've been in contact with him and I've, I sent him an email with pictures of some ideas that I copied Adam, and I've given copies to all the members who are here, and I guess there's someone on the back table.
Right.
I'm glad to see that you've incorporated them. I still think, and it's, and I do like the square window, by the way. I think it fits the style of the building itself much better. I still think the poles themselves need more bulk. They should look, I'd like, I think they should look squatter, and it would match the weight you're seeing of the building better.
Okay, so.
And I like, I don't know if your architect.
We actually, we did look at that based on your comments. The columns now are 24 inches square. We looked at increasing the size to 30 inches, and he just felt it was just too heavy and too clunky, and it was out of scale, out of proportion with the rest of the building. It also created a few challenges with the, with the drive aisle and the circle you could see on the end of the portico share. Not that we couldn't probably overcome those, but I think the bigger concern, at least it was his opinion, that he felt that just the weight wasn't proportional to what he sees in the building.
And did you lower it? Because in the picture we had seen, it looked pretty high in relation to the car, well, there you've got a car.
Yeah, we didn't actually lower the height. We lowered the peak, but not the lowest, it's still at 13 feet 6 inches. We're reluctant to go below that.
You shouldn't. It just looked that it was taller when.
Yeah, I think with these, with it being wider now and with the shallower peak, it just appears, appears shorter, which was one of the goals.
Yeah. Okay, fine. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Garrett. So that is now out in front of everybody that this has been changed and discussed and added to the design. We've been at this project for two years, something now, and I think we don't know where we'll get by 10 o'clock, but I'd like to think that we'll get to public comment and have some time for commission consideration of what we've heard tonight and provide staff and the applicant direction of where we go from here. I think that we've got a lot to talk about. So I would ask that the public, get in line, please. I have a timer here, and I would like to hear from everybody. So you'll have the three minutes, and I hate to be so rude, as I have a beep, but please abide. State your name and address. All right. I'm sure there'll be stragglers. Please, state your name, three minutes.
My name's Denise Beck. I'm at unit 47, unit number 16, redwood, 47 redwood, I have unit number 16. And I have a statement to give from Robert Burton, who's the former Mill Valley mayor. When I was a child, he was the mayor, when I, when I resided in Mill Valley. This is some of the things, points that he makes. Please explain, one, why you are allowing yourselves to be bullied by this developer. It's clear that all renascence is doing is wearing everyone down until they say, "I give up." This is a typical developer's strategy. However, it's not your job to surrender. Your job is to represent the people of Corte Madera and insist upon compliance within Corte Madera's general plan and with the appropriate environmental standards, which include protecting the wildlife that uses and depends upon the pond located on the. the wildlife that uses and depends upon the pond located on the property. Two, why would you even consider giving approval to a proposal that doesn't comply with California Environmental Quality Act and won't be approved by the Regional Water Quality Control Board? And I disagree with you on that one. Okay, Regional Quality Control Board and the Army Corps of Engineers? That's just dumb and terrible waste of everyone's time and money. Three, why don't you simply send the developer back to the drawing board with a clear direction to start over and come up with a plan acceptable to the community? This is...this would involve a saving and restoring the entire pond, and I mean the entire pond. And that would be Plan Alternative 2 of the RFEIR, which is 147 units. If you got that plan, we would not be...have to get rid of the pond at all. We would have the entire pond. Also, we need to have you come up with an architectural plan that will be exciting and attractive rather than looking like a typical Central Valley motel. In addition, what about carrying out the Corte Madera's general plan and providing a solution that meets California Environmental Quality Standards, Regional Water Quality Central Board Standards, and Army Corps requirements? How simple and straightforward and productive that would be? So again, I would say Alternative Plan 2 of the RFEIR with 147 units would allow us to keep the pond and the habitat for the birds, and let's kill that 174-unit proposal 100% and listen to your constituents. That's what your job is, not to be bullied by developers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you start the clock, could I please ask for the slide that shows the existing site plan proposal? Okay, so I agree with the previous speaker that we're kind of crossing Ts and dotting Is before we have a plan that actually set out with the objective of retaining the pond, which is why this plan has been rejected by the state, is that it never sought out to actually explore that alternative. And while I do appreciate that there are some steps being made, I think we're in a backwards process where we're trying to put lipstick on unnecessarily inferior design. And if you could for just a minute, even this...
Please take the microphone, will you, Pat?
Even if you can just imagine taking this outdoor area and flipping it that way, and then you have this beautiful area that actually embraces the pond and it opens up to here, I think that the hotel would have an amazing marketing opportunity to sell something that nobody else has. I think the waterfall is a great idea because that is going to block the noise from the freeway. I'd put in a couple. I'd put in a little viewing stand right here. There's no real need to have this going out to here. It really contributes nothing. If you were to take the pond and the outdoor space and marry it in whatever way works, I've actually been drawing on your designs, but if you...if you extended the hotel through here and then you opened up something through here, you could end up with these beautiful views that open to the water and the trees and the birds, and you would find people were staying at this hotel for that very reason. Skidmore Owings &amp; Merrill is a volunteer...is an architectural firm of international renown that has volunteered its time to help us with a new pedestrian overcrossing at the Tamil Pius Exchange, and they are very willing to sit down and walk the site with the applicant and just come up with some ideas for how to reorient this site plan so that it can actually do something truly unique that the community would be proud of and the birds would love. And I think your visitors would talk about how beautiful Marin County is because they preserved this beautiful pond and now celebrate it with a viewing area while still keeping the people off the pond. The other thing I want to bring up while I still have time is something that I've brought up at every single public hearing, and I haven't yet have anybody fill me in on what it's all about, and that is the elevation of this property. I understand it is currently beneath FEMA's sea level requirements, and the land is going to have to be compacted and built up in order to support this project, in order to get permission to build it, and I want to see an elevation. I want to see a cross section that shows where it's going to be built up, how high it's going to be, how that's going to affect the birds, the trees, and everything else on the property, and also how it's going to look to have this nice, high Marriott on the hill while all the other community houses look down, look...you know, you know what it's like when a house gets raised next to the one next door. So I just would really like to have that question answered.
I get that, yeah. I will just say that it's on the plans. Anyway, we'll talk about that later.
Hi, my name is Andre Pesos. I live on Christmas Tree Hill. I've sat here through a bunch of these meetings, and one of the meetings I sat here through, I listened to...pardon me if I get the name wrong, is the Regional Water Quality Control Board, state that in order to make the pond changed in any way, that the applicant was going to have to prove that this was the only way they could profitably build this, and that all the onus of proving this was on the applicant. Now, what happened to that? That's never been shown. We have a local architect, Michael Harlock, who has come up with an alternative plan that would leave the pond intact, give them all their rooms with a podium design, and I haven't heard that considered. Now, I'm not saying you guys need to accept his proposal, but it just shows that there are alternatives that are not being looked at. The other thing I wanted to ask is the biologist, last time I heard him speak, or the time before, said it would take 25 years for the habitat to reach a natural state again. That seems quite excessive. It seems to me that there are ways that this pond could remain intact. He could have the rooms he wants, the profit for his family that he wants, and most of the community is only upset about the pond, nothing else. If you guys keep the pond intact, you won't see me anymore, that's for sure. So anyway, I thank you for your time, and I would love to have some of these questions answered. I know there's another way of doing it. We are not looking hard enough. Why aren't we?
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Barry Cohen. It's my first time here at this commission for this project. I followed it with emails from local neighbors. I felt it was important to come. Most of...I agree with what has been stated by the people who came up here before me. I'm not going to dwell on the pond, although I agree with what's been stated. I'm going to dwell on the aesthetics. We have a chance here to have something truly dynamic and exciting in terms of an architecture style, and I cannot understand why nobody is embracing that idea, or this group has not embraced this idea. Everyone...I've seen litany's of males talking about how it looks like a Motel 6 in the Valley. I wouldn't say it's that bad, but it's not that good. Why not go for something more like Throckmorton Village in Mill Valley where they built the condominiums there? It's very attractive. It's more modern. Bardessono up in Yountville, I believe, something along those lines, something that's really stimulating and exciting and is seen as thousands and thousands of people go by it every day on the highway. It would be beautiful to see. As we talk about the outdoor space, I'm going to toss one crazy idea out there. If the hotel was smaller, maybe there would be room to put in a community vegetable garden like they have in...all over Switzerland. You see it in various communities where people have a little tiny plot from their town and they grow their vegetables there. That would be an exciting addition to something like this. I know it requires water, so that's an issue, but perhaps it could be part of a fee to own a little plot to grow vegetables. But most importantly, the aesthetics, something clean, stimulating, modern. There is a move to modernism that we're seeing like we've never seen before. If you go look at real estate, you see more and more of it every day now. I built a house here 12 years ago. I came before this commission, and I got a unanimous approval to build a modern steel home on the first shot. I'd like to see more of that type of aesthetic in our county. It's the direction of architecture, anyway, and this is a great place to start to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Utkarsh. I won't harp on the same things that Barry said. I'm new to the party, so you know, I just totally share his view, and hello to everybody. I basically wrote down three questions, and I'll probably summarize my own thoughts about them. What are the safeguards around the pond to prevent any kind of accidents that might happen? Because I don't see anything here in the pictures. Second, what exact reasons were given from the fire department to make that access road next to the pond slimmer? Seemed a little odd to me. And last but not least, I see that there is a plan to keep the water recirculating, if I'm not mistaken. Where are we going to get that water from? And this year, thankfully, there was a lot of rain, you know? We have seen some tremendous drought out here in the past. How...how will that affect this whole thing? And just to summarize my own thoughts, I think that the developer, Marriott, Renaissance, whoever, they don't really own the pond, but they are trying to financially, you know, make some gains out of it, like use its aesthetic value, like treat it as a nice value addition by adding things around it. I think that's probably a smart business idea, but I don't see, you know, the same level of responsibility that comes with trying to, you know, use a natural resource to your own profitability. I don't see much argument around that. I did some reading. I also, like, dug up old material. Nowhere I could find, you know, that level of responsibility and ownership being taken with that, but I am hoping that I'll get some answers in the next sitting. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Would you please state your name again, please?
My name is Utkarsh, and I live on Pixley Avenue.
Okay.
I'm new in town. Hi, everyone.
Welcome to town.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Zeff, and first of all, I want to say how grateful I am to be in a country where we take these things seriously and let people talk about them and listen to the input of the community and debate back and forth instead of rubber stamping whatever somebody wants to do or having a directive on high as to what everybody has to do. And I'm very grateful for all the time and energy everyone puts into this. I agree with the statements of everyone who came before me. The comments of the former mayor of Mill Valley are absolutely apt. A year ago, I asked you folks to do something heroic here. You've not even gotten close to it, but you're not giving in, as far as I can tell. I greatly appreciate the comments of the biologist, Mr. Martin. I think he's, in a very diplomatic way, told you that this is not a solution and that you really need to push for a proper solution. You know, as Mr. Cohen said, he got his house through on the first apply. I built a house in San Francisco with neighborhood review and lots of regulations, and what I did was I looked at what the regulations required and what the neighborhood required, and I designed my house to fit what was required, and I got through right away. And really, they need to look at what's required to leave this pond alone, to downsize the project, do the second option, which is described by the first speaker, and not ask for general plan or zoning amendments. They need to fit within our community aesthetically, physically, and economically and ecologically, okay? They need to fit within our community, and we can't keep destroying nature for profit. This world is going to end with man destroying nature for profit. One other point, Mr. Hensel and I both sent emails in to you on this. It's not in the public documents. I don't know why. I agree fully with what the Community Venture Partners said. I really appreciate the input of everyone who's come and spoke...spoken before me, and I ask you to do something heroic, do something responsible, and don't let this plan go through. Make it get an entire redesign, or let them build it in Novato and so they don't have to do the remediation with the pond. If they want to remediate things, build it in Novato.
Thank you, David.
Good evening. I'm Carol Page from San Anselmo. I'd like to ask that at 36%, is the pond even a viable habitat? As depicted, it looks more like a puddle than a pond. Tree removal and the proximity of parking will degrade the heron roost. They may never return. Diminishing this resource to a vanishing point is the exact opposite of preserving and enhancing it. There is no defensible mitigation for its loss in any documentation. Burdell is not a quid pro quo. It is not equal. This is a serious omission and reason enough for denial. Next, when I looked at the renderings of the structures, whoa, I mean, just whoa. Literally, please do not foist on this county another assault to the senses. One built at Wind Cup is enough. I protest that one applicant has been able to use your public process for so long, I think you're coming on to three years, to niggle and prevaricate, contending that the profit from this project is not enough, that he should be granted more, that he is deserving of special consideration, that he needs a general plan amendment and increased floor area ratio, that he needs a new zoning district. From my observation, I would have to say the apparent bias of staff to this project does not reflect well on your town. This applicant has not been denied either use or reasonable return on his inherited property. I urge you to deny the application. We do not deserve this, and neither does the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What is her name, Peter?
Her name was, I believe, Carol Page.
Carol Page, thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Barbara Freitas. Here again for the herons. They can't speak for themselves, and it seems that they will be moving on or their habitat will be lost, even according to the environmental expert. I feel that we're growing old together. It's been two years, and I'm really old, and I'm really tired and don't want to be here. I don't think many of us wish to continue what seems a futile effort. I feel, as stated in the EIR from the town of Corte Madera in your policy CD-1.2, it requires residential, non-residential, and infrastructure design that respects natural areas and ecosystems within Corte Madera. I feel very strongly that destruction of a habitat for an established colony of birds that have increased in number from 2013, again in 2014, and in 2015, they're up to a 35 count by Audubon. I feel that removing their roost and destroying their habitat is a violation of the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. I've been saying this for two years. It's tiresome. I'm sure you're sick of hearing it. I know there's been a debate that maybe it doesn't apply in this case. I would disagree. I also feel, as Audubon pointed out, that these changes certainly warrant further environmental review. I would love to hear what Mr. Fernandez from the Water Board has to say. I don't think, and I like that, the little puddle, I don't think this little puddle is going to qualify as maintaining the waters that they are in charge of. In any case, I would ask you to please, again, consider the environment, consider the herons. Take a look again at the Migratory Bird Treaty Act if you haven't read it. I can point out three species that are listed in the EIR that are also listed in the Migratory Bird Treaty Act that are to be protected. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Barbara.
Michael Harlock, 533 Redwood Ave.
Michael Harlock, 533 Redwood Avenue, members of the commission. After three years of the town's review of this application, I wish we were further along. It should be acknowledged that the Renaissance organization, who have been good town citizens, have spent a great deal of time and consultant fees to get to this point, not to mention the cost to town staff for its competent handling of the complex bureaucratic requirements and the commission's time during innumerable hours of hearing. I also think almost everyone agrees that the current motel is long overdue for rebuilding. I just saw a next-door post giving thanks that this protracted negotiation between the town and Renaissance has taken place in a public forum. And I guess we can be grateful that the missteps that led to so much distrust over the approval of Wind Cup have been avoided. Unfortunately, what I am not grateful for in the revised project application are as follows. The Marriott concept is essentially a facelift of a corporate prototype. The facades have been improved and hopefully the port crochet now meets community standards. Renaissance has loyally defended Marriott's needs for a suburban building system that they are familiar with, but the site plan covers 85 percent of the site with buildings and hard surfaces, more than 25 percent more coverage than the existing Great Western Inn. The land use proposal eliminates the swim club and restaurant in violation of the mixed-use goals of the recent precise plan that guides development for this gateway corridor. The plan fills in the pond, now verified by regional agencies to have significant habitat value in violation of the general plan's environmental goals. The site concept amounts to an inward-looking facility, a donut surrounded by open parking lots, served by a single entrance on Madera Boulevard, the traffic conflicts from which have not been solved. I regard the latest site plan we have just been presented with mini pond recreated hard against the freeway and inaccessible to the public as a rather cynical gesture. In closing, I would like to offer a couple suggestions as to how we might, in the future, greet a proposed development with more enthusiasm. First, we should make greater use of the EIR to explore more creative alternatives, ones that can't be rejected out of hand as not meeting the applicant's program. In this case, the alternatives did not prove useful in shaping project design. And to sum up, second, the town's reviewers should use the powers invested them to challenge design solutions that do not meet community needs and standards. In some cases, as with Renaissance, this may mean rejecting the corporate prototype instead of nibbling at the edges by trying on alternative facades. I know that corporate tenants, if they want a site badly enough, and even more importantly, if the city demands it, will do something better. And I encourage this town in the future to just say no in a more affirmative way. We deserve a solution that meets our community's unique needs and aspirations. For these reasons, I hope we can collectively learn from this experience.
Thank you, Michael.
Cindy Winter Luxper. I swam at the hotel for many years and through that experience, I've come to know something about the staff and how the hotel is run, and I think very highly of them. So I hate to say something that just occurred to me and that I have never heard mentioned here. This pond is very attractive. Will it be an attractive nuisance and create liability issues? The swimming pool has attendance around most of the time. There are rules. It's right in the middle of the hotel property where what's happening there is fairly visible and/or audible. But this pond is way off in a corner and kids will be kids, people will be drinking at night, who knows what will happen? And I think that maybe the, some liability attorneys might be consulted to get a broader picture of it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Hi there. My name is Robert Goldman. I'm standing here next to this picture of the gazebo. Every time I drive by it, I just look at it and I go, this is Corder Madera. This is Marin County. It makes a statement. I played in the Corder Madera Town Band for 10 years. I've been swimming three to five days a week and I ventured at this hotel. I ventured to say I have more contact and knowledge with these birds than anyone in this room unless you work at that hotel. I have 1,600 photographs of my friends. My friends are these birds. And I've sent photos to the Army Corps of Engineer, and I want to show you something. I'll show you an eight by 10 and then I'll give it to the board. This is a normal bird. This is a normal black-crowned night here. And look at the eye. It's not in stress. Dr. Bundy, you're quite obviously in tune with what's going to happen. This is a night-crowned heron. Look at the pupil. A motorcycle went by. The bird is extraordinarily stressed and what happened is it flew away. I'm going to pass this down.
Please point those photos at the dais here, too. You're going to pass them up. Okay.
So you'll see, these birds are individuals. I know them. I know their faces. I know which ones are where and where they roost, whether they're in eucalyptus or the other trees. As soon as the noise starts from those saws, these birds are gone. The second thing I would say, meaning the first part is, I'm defending my birds. These are my birds. These are all of your birds. These are a treasure to Marin County. And the second thing that we all ought to be concerned about is, I mean, I'm thinking of my kids. Do you feel proud, would you feel proud to your children, I have three kids here, to go by what to me looks like a motel, a Hampton Inn? It belongs down on the 101, or on the, excuse me, on the Richmond Bridge exit, where all the industrial areas. This is not what you want to see. When you come through Marin, you see Horse Hill and you go, wow, look at Marin. It's just this incredible place. And we're going to go past Horse Hill and over the hill and we're going to look aside and see something that could be in Kansas City or Davenport, Iowa. And it's not what I want to see in my county. And I think you guys can do better. And I will say, I do like the people at the hotel and it's not rundown. They maintain it. I saw them painting the benches the other day. They do a terrific job. The umbrellas are out. They have new lawn furniture. The lawns are trimmed every Wednesday. They take care of the place. If they build a nice place, a good place with a distinct design, not something cookie cutter from corporate headquarters, then I think they get the approval they need.
Lucinda Smith, here in Corder Madera, 46 Alta Way. I've been here on many of the meetings as well on this because I learned from the Wind Cup that to be silent was to be a huge mistake. I've lived in Corder Madera 50 years and I've seen a lot of change. Now you're going to be seeing this horrible thing from the freeway that everybody comments about called Wind Cup, or now I guess it's Tam Ridge. Now we want to put in another thing that's right alongside the freeway that does not have any character, is huge, and is going to be another eyesore. I think the comments that have been made here are very apropos and I think that the board needs, or the commission needs to hear them, needs to take some action. I am very distressed with the actions of some of the commissioners as I have perceived them. We have been at this a long time, but particularly, I'm going to point out Ms. Metcalf. She has offered at the last meeting to meet privately with this group so that she could get across what she thinks will be approved or be more acceptable.
I did not.
These private meetings, whether they took place or not, but I think you confirmed that you had met privately with them tonight, if these private meetings have been going on with any of the commissioners, I think that they need to recuse themselves and I think that it needs to be very clearly stated that you cannot participate in any decisions that are made. I agree with the first speaker. I think you're being bullied. You're being presented with an option that is not necessary. Even Marriott, if you've got to go with one of these corporate people, is saying that 147-unit development is plausible. We got to go to 175. That is outrageous. We learned from Wind Cup. Please learn from Wind Cup. Please listen to the community. Please think about some of the things that we need to do to keep this community the beautiful, beautiful place that it is. I agree with the speaker. It is a gorgeous place. I love to come home here. I love to work here. I love to be a member of this community. And it's changing to be something that is an eyesore. And I don't want that. And I don't think you do. But I need to have you guys who are going to be making the decision of whether you allow this to happen or not. And you need to get on board with what the community wants. Thank you.
Peter, I would like to respond since I was attacked.
I'll let you do that. Who else is up for a comment here? Anybody else going to stand up? Anyone else? I'm asking if you want to, you made a statement already.
Can I just say one other thing?
No.
Please?
The attorney said no.
No.
May I please respond to her because I'm going to shut her up.
Just a moment. Yeah, okay. I think we've heard everything.
The attorney said no.
So we're not...
So if you allow speakers to speak again, then you'd have to open it up for anyone who wants to speak again. So it's up to the commission and the chair.
It's your responsibility to speak to what you need to speak to and the time you're given, and I appreciate the input. So that said, I think there's a lot here to respond to and I'm going to ask staff of some things and the applicant a couple things, but Phyllis, you're wanting to clarify something.
Yes.
I'm not sure whether it's...
Now, Lucinda Smith has a habit of making comments.
All right, I'm going to say no. If we're going to do this, let's not. We're going to end that. We're not going to start this. So, Phyllis.
No, I...
Phyllis, I'm going to say no, that we don't go into this one-on-one.
I want to explain the meetings. Each of us, with Adam, met with Garrett Grealoo to review after, not the last meeting, but the meeting before, the directions we were giving them. They felt some of it was not clear enough. This was with the attorney's advice. This was Adam sitting there with us. I think we each took, was it an hour or so? That is perfectly appropriate. We reported it at the next meeting that we had met. And as far as what you said about tonight, I had sent an email making some suggestions to try to improve the port crochet. I sent with pictures attached, with a copy to Adam, with a copy to Peter, as the chair distributed to the other members tonight, and it was out on the table for everybody to see. Nothing is done that is not transparent. And it is important that people who give their time and try to work on things are not treated in the way that you attempted to. And I resent it and want you to know it. I'm saying it in public.
All right, enough.
You may say that. You may say that.
Please, Linda.
You're the one who is saying that.
Linda, you're out of order. Please.
It wasn't a private meeting.
Please, sit down. I'm going to call a recess here if you're going to continue. So that's it.
Please call a recess.
So I want to ask Adam just one thing about the commentary that's come in. I believe that everything we get has been put out for the record.
Yeah, there's a comment regarding, a couple emails from David Zeff, I believe, and Peter Hensel. Those were included as supplemental to the package. It's in there.
It's all in there.
These all, unfortunately, what happens is we send out the packets on Friday. We get stuff afterwards. We have to supplement it with handouts at the meeting. That's what's been done tonight, so.
And they end up on the website?
The desk and over here on the, as well.
Yeah, right. We have copies of them. They're back there. They're all available. We're aware of them. They're distributed. So we're not going to get to a resolution here tonight. That's clear. So we've heard almost a chorus of negative opinion of the project at this point. And I'm going to say that some of it is new commentary, some of it is a reiteration of old commentary, some of it is based on fact, and some of it is just based on personal preference. So there's some things we can respond to and I can ask staff to respond to. And I think that there's a couple of things that Adam has stated, as has Jim Martin, regarding the Regional Quality, Regional Water Quality Control Board and the Army Corps of Engineers. They have their own review process. We are, the town is not a party to those requirements of those agencies. And that's not a part of the...
That's right. And they have different, we went over this several times at the last meetings. We have written responses to all of those comments in the record, but they have different criteria. Javier Fernandez came to our meeting, said there are different standards. We are not those agencies and it's town's position, we shouldn't become those agencies. We have no role being, using the same criteria to evaluate things that they are uniquely positioned to evaluate and are required by law to evaluate. We have different regulations.
Yes, they do their job and the town has its own plan and requirement, so that's why they're separated.
Right.
And they will be reviewing this if it moves forward, so. And that may change the project.
That's right. We have acknowledged that as well, yes.
All right. So was there anything, Adam, that you wanted to pull out and respond to in any of the comments?
I did want to talk about the fact that we had those comments in the record. Let me see. There were some comments from one commenter about the reasons for the fire department making the road slimmer. I mean, that was a concession. They are still comfortable with 16 feet, that their engines can fit on 16 feet, even though the requirement is generally 25 to 26 feet. So they were trying to, in the context of the discussion that was being, that was had by the commission, in terms of trying to increase the size, were okay with a 16-foot-wide road. The water, the pond water, obviously, as we've discussed, just to answer the question though, comes from Lagoon One and the town's flood control system, so it's through the culvert tied to Lagoon One, so there's no new water that's necessary. There are, I don't know, I did want to mention, there was, the applicant did try to, did have, and this was also supplemental, given to the commission in their supplemental packets and put out in the back as well. There were, there was a response from the applicant as requested by the commission at the last meeting that the applicant respond to Mr. Harlock's prior proposal for podium parking. So that should be, you've had that to look at and that should be, I just want to make sure that that was reviewed and it was... I just want to make sure that that was reviewed and it was also put out with the rest of the public comments. In terms of FEMA, there was a... In the EIR, and there are sections in the plans, they don't... I think what the commenter was requesting was a more, a broader sort of scale or a model of some sort that would show sort of the surrounding context of the existing houses and whatnot. To that extent, there isn't a existing section. There are in the submitted plans, most recently, I think from... Gosh, I don't remember. I believe it's March or earlier this year. There are landscape sections. It could have been last year as well. But there are landscape sections that do run the extent of the property up to the hotel and run through the hotel to the other side of the property, but they don't show sort of across the street and whatnot. In looking at that, the current finished floor elevations of the existing buildings out there are 9.25 feet or elevation NAVD, I think it is. They will need to go to... And some of those are obviously, I don't have a pointer, but some of the existing buildings are fairly close to Tamil Vista, including the one at the northwest, yes, northwest corner of the site, and the southwest corner of the site. There's two buildings there at 9.25. In order to get out of the FEMA floodplain requirements, they have to go to 11. So, essentially, it's an increase in about 1.0... Well, it is 1.75 feet. They may go a little bit higher, 2 feet or so, to get to 11.25 feet. And that... So, the point is, and some of those buildings are actually set back further from the existing buildings on Tamil Vista, but they're roughly in the same place. If you notice, the existing sort of building from Tamil Vista, they're roughly in the same location or that far set back. So, you're looking at the land being graded up approximately 2 feet greater than it is today.
If I may interrupt.
I will note...
I'm just looking at the existing plan, and it says 9.5 finished floor of the existing building.
The existing. So, it's a 1, less than 2 feet elevation gain. I will note, some of the existing plans do show sort of, the original plans show meeting a 10.25, which was the old FEMA requirement. Mid-project review, it got FEMA elevated at one additional foot. So, some of those sections I'm referring to probably are showing the 10.25, but you're talking about an additional foot beyond that. So, while I think it's, you know, valid point to show that and to recognize the fact that there is significant regrading and construction activity that will be needed and Phil coming in to create that high elevation, it's not an extreme difference from what is currently out there when you compare it to especially some other properties like Raising House that's currently in the floodplain. So, I just want to make that comparison, hopefully.
All right. Thank you. I noticed that a couple of comments about flipping the design. We... I think if I looked at Garrett and his partner any number of times, you know, they've had rationale explained a number of times as to why the design is what it is and the way it faces, and not toward the highway but toward Mount Tam. I think that that has been one of their parameters that they've had. I think that we have our list of essential issues and considerations and values that we have to weigh with this. And I think that we, without fail, take this duty very seriously. Anyone who implies that we don't take it seriously or that we have some intention of being out of sight of things does not follow us or our actions. We do things, I think, differently than they were done five, 10 years ago, and we've seen that. Adam has been a great guiding source, as has Judith, in making sure that our openness is existent and consistent with everything that we do. So, it is a parameter of how we operate, and we do that, I think, as best as we can. And we do it with what we think is in mind. We are also trying to work with an applicant who has put forth a plan that they want to promote. Whether it is something we agree to or not is another issue. But they are still in a plan that they've submitted and have revised many times. And I think that Garrett would say that this is what they want to do. So, it's going to be up to us to decide what we will do. And what I'd like to say here is in 10 minutes, we're going to break, but I would like to get to what we want to direct these guys. I wanted to ask each of you what you would like to do with the plan that we have before us tonight, which is primarily a pond plan that we've heard from. And he came back to us with tonight and these items that were requested of him last week. So, I'm saying I want a response to that from you guys. And then, as a second to that, what we want to... What we want to look at at the next hearing, because we're going to have to continue this, and it'll have to probably be in two weeks, but I think that we have to decide what it is beyond that we want to look at, if it's just what was on the plan tonight, and if there's anything else you want to bring to the table for that, because we really still have this entirety before us. But they did respond to what we asked of them, and there is a follow-up requirement that's acknowledged by Mr. Martin and by staff, that they have to take that pond plan further if we are going to want them to do that. So, we have a very short period of time to do this because we have to get to Marin Montessori. So, with that said, Nicolo, I would like to ask you what you would say about what was presented tonight and what you want to have looked at at the next meeting. If you're not quite ready, then I'll turn to someone else here.
You know, I need to be sure about something. Every time we meet, because of the length, we kind of step backwards all the time. So, I never, I don't understand where are we supposed to start tonight, because many things have been already kind of approved, at least verbally. And so, right now, are we specifically...
So, I'm going to say it again. I want you to respond to what was presented tonight and if you want to, what you want to see about this next meeting. So, they responded with some specifics about the plans tonight. So, it's item number one. Item number two, is there anything else that you want them to come back with that we are looking at tonight that surrounds the property? Or do you want to make another statement about the project as a whole? So, right now, we got what they brought to us. So, you can say, I like it, I don't like it, I want to see more, or we direct staff to get Mr. Martin to go ahead and develop the pond, or not? So, you can say that.
Okay. So, I think that they did respond to what we've asked. There is an intent to expand... They did expand the pond. Once again, as I mentioned on my previous statement, this project has become the pond, and I don't want to be focused on that. And the project is about the hotel. So, the pond, the way they're addressing it, it's... With this plan, it is an improvement from last time. I think that, from what I understood, it could be made as an intelligent ecosystem. It's not part of a massive, grand-scale habitat that needs to develop further and become, you know, an incredible geological area. So, it is, as was mentioned before, an isolated ecosystem, which is now damaged to some point and is not optimal. So, I think that the plan, as is presented, can be further studied and become this intelligent ecosystem, which has then to meet certain criterias, which I still don't know who's going to dictate those, but I think that can be done. So, I would say that as far as relationship pond plan, I'm satisfied, because the plan, as it is, it was already approved prior. So, I do not want to reanalyze the concept and the plan. We're analyzing what has surfaced recently, which is some changes to the pond, and therefore, I'm looking at the pond now in relationship to the project. So, to answer, I think that they are, they've responded, and obviously, I suppose we need to analyze more, the levels and the goals of this pond, what has to become and what kind of study they need to provide and plans. I don't know if this is clear.
I think it responds to the pond issue. I understand that. I think that we have still said, you know, we've got other issues that we can still look at. We haven't given a stamp of approval to anything we've given, and a sedance to some of the elements of the plan, but we haven't said it's approved. You know, it's not. It's not approved. So, we're directing them with the pond to get it to be a viable pond in the corner right now, and that's what I hear you saying. Jim Martin knows how to do that. Staff knows how to do that. That would be the follow-up program for that specific piece of it. But I think what I'm going to do is come back to you in a minute and ask you a couple other things.
Sure.
That would be great. Thank you. Phyllis?
To follow up on what was being said and why I also questioned Jim Martin, he mentioned the hiring an independent hydrologist and a habitat restoration specialist. And this, I mean, you just said that staff and Jim can do the things we need.
With these guys, yes.
I think, and it's important, that our expert has said that these particular experts should be hired.
Correct.
And I really think, until we find out what is happening or what can happen and what will happen with the pond, if a plan similar to this is done, I mean, it's obvious, even if the, nothing is done to the pond, just the construction is going to upset the current birds and other habitat there. And who's responsible? If that's our responsibility or the applicant's, well, probably the responsibility is to be as least destructive as possible to the current environment. But I don't really want to think beyond anything until we find out about the pond, because the pond is really the core of what's happening. It's like concentric circles. And even though the pond is not in the middle, but the core is the pond itself, and then the additional circles have to do with the design, the number of rooms, et cetera. And I picture it that way. And if we don't address the core and have an answer, I think we're wasting our time, the applicant's time, and the citizens' time.
All right. So, I hear that as a primary statement from you. All right. Thank you. Dr. Bundy?
Yeah, I wanted to comment on the architecture and the desire to have something aesthetically modern or, you know, really unique for Corder Madera. One of the things that we haven't heard, that we heard a lot earlier, was how much people liked the present Corder Madera Inn, because they'd had so many of their family, friends, you know, stay there over the years as a very, you know, affordable, reasonable, clean, well-run motel. And I think Garrett has done a lot to respond to what initially was just a very corporate architecture, very, you know, block, you know, very little articulation in it. There's been a lot more in the way of articulation. He has dropped elevations. He has kept, you know, third story away from sensitive areas, Tamil Vista in particular. And I think he's responded with architecture that is, this isn't going to be Wincup. Wincup has almost no setback and very little articulation and is right out there in front of you. And this is set back. Parking surrounds it, but also there's going to be a lot of vegetation, trees that are hopefully going to provide good habitat for a lot of the upland birds, songbirds and things like that. So, I think he has created an architectural complex that is also going to be affordable to all of the people that have enjoyed staying at the existing Corder Madera Inn, although this is obviously going to be more expensive because it's an upgrade from that. The issue with the pond, I believe that we're going in the right direction. I might just add that in the time that, over the years that this has been going on and being discussed, Corder Madera, which has a vast wetlands on the bay, probably loses a couple of acres a year of good quality wetlands to storm surges and ferry wakes, and now in the future to sea level rise, which needs to be addressed. There's no way to use mitigation for that. It's just not set up to do that. You know, I'm sympathetic to the black-crowned night herons, to the habitat. I think this is a degraded pond that we're dealing with right now. And I get the point that if we left the pond intact and they didn't have to do anything to it, we would still have a degraded pond. And I think the smaller pond puddle that we're looking at over the years with the willows developing and the other trees maturing, it can provide good habitat, and perhaps the black-crowned night herons could come back. So, I believe we're going in the right direction. I don't know what the Regional Water Quality Control Board or the Army Corps of Engineers is going to say. You know, they may shoot Garrett's pond concept down, and we're back looking at, you know, the full pond with a different design.
All right. Thank you, Bob. So, I believe that, as we talked about the pond last time, we wanted to see this pond developed into something real, something functional, that walked the line between what it is and what it can be. And I think the first stab has been made at that, but it's clearly not intended to be a water feature. This has to be a pond that is engineered by these guys that Jim clearly knows about and are a part of it, a wetland hydrologist and a habitat restoration specialist. Having worked with these kind of people before, I know what they do and can do, and the results can be spectacular over time. So, I think that that's what has to happen. There has to be a better description of what would go into the pond and how the water system would work with the pipeline in and the pipeline out to the marsh. So, the pipeline in from the...
Lagoon One.
Lagoon One, right, would be controlled in such a way. And all of this can be done. I've seen it over the years, and I think this could be something special. There are redwoods out there now, and they're proposing some trees that could work, some that need to be modified. So, I think that with Jim and with these other guys, at least take what you have and develop something that satisfies this pond requirement and could be a viable mitigation for that .08 acreage that is still required. I think that the SEQA document had to date has accepted the BIRD-L mitigation, but we're still short, and I think this could be used to satisfy the remaining mitigation. And I think there's a way to do it. So, I would like to see that. And as for the remainder of the issues, I would say that we're kind of out of time here tonight. But Nicolo, I'm going to ask... But Nicolau, and I'm going to ask Adam here, you know, we've sort of acceded to some things, right, the number of units, but we haven't put a final stamp of approval on any of this.
No, that's correct. I mean, obviously, since the last time the commission had a resolution and voted to approve this project, that was in April of 2016, we came back because of the pond, but as you're doing that, that you need to comment on the totality of the project again. And I would expect or hope to hear from the commission direction as to if you're ready to do that or if you want to give direction to staff to do something in preparation of a potential decision or not. I mean, that's sort of your charge to determine if you're ready to do that or not, but it would be helpful to, for the commission to collectively come to a conclusion on that or, you know, that issue and the project as a whole. And you're going to have to remake all of the, you know, confirm all the findings can be met again and so on and so forth. So.
Yeah. Well, in the interest of time, I don't know how to be, do this with brevity, but it's important to get to that point where we can direct you and give something to Garrett and the community as to where this is going.
Right.
And so I think that we've talked about the architecture. We've done a lot of work on the architecture. We've gotten the applicant to allow the bike pathway, to remove the power poles, to add more trees, to do the traffic mitigation. There's a lot that has been done. I, in the, in, I'm going to go back to Nicolau, I guess, here and ask you, Nicolau, given that, that we're talking about the totality of it, you know, these are issues that we've had to weigh and that we're still weighing so that it is about the totality of it. And if you could just say, architecture, you know, density of this thing, we did talk about these things in previous meetings, and we have said some statements about what we think we could agree to, but we've not issued any agreement to anything. So I'm asking you to say what you've looked at and what you think about these issues.
Well, I'm going to make it really easy. I cannot ethically change what was approved before because there is nothing other than the pond that has changed any of these other issues, in my opinion. So I cannot change what previously was my position, which if we want, we can go over number one, two, three, four, as it is listed on the, on the purpose of the project. General plan amendment to create a land use designation is a yes. Up to .55 also is a yes. Zoning ordinance amendment to create a new zoning district, C5, also yes. And preliminary plan, I believe that's, we're not...
It's not quite there.
Quite there. And precise plan, I'm not sure.
That's the design review and the site plan.
We're not there, but getting close. And 174 rooms or 75.
It's actually, yeah, the revised proposal that they've shown most recently is 175, just to be clear about that.
So what was approved, 174 before and now is 1...
It was 180 something.
No, it was 174.
174.
And now they're proposing 175.
175. So that one is debatable, so to be, but I would not oppose it.
Okay. That's very clear. Thank you for revisiting those elements that we did a year ago and that the issue has become the pond since then and what to do with the pond. And so it's progressing with the pond as a change, or we would revise the project because of the pond. Phyllis, you know what I'm saying?
I hear what you're saying.
Okay. So when you look at these elements, we have before us these options, again, approve motion, directing staff to direct the additional environmental review we've just talked about and also, or to prepare a draft resolution for us to review.
I'm not comfortable having a draft resolution prepared at this point because since the pond has become the core issue, I don't think we can make any decisions until we have an answer to those studies that I assume we're going to tell and not ask the applicant, you know, to take care of. And once we see those studies, it may make us and the applicant make a lot of changes in the design. So we're taking up staff time to put together a resolution, which may not be the resolution to move forward. I also would suggest that instead of saying you thought it would come back in two weeks or something like that, I would rather say a time uncertain to be sure there's time for the studies to be done. It may be in two weeks, it may be in four weeks, but rather than meet every two weeks and not have answers and, you know, meet the next two weeks.
Got it. Agreed. Okay. Dr. Bundy? So we've got these issues before us. They're all the approvals required, including this pond. So we have the elements of the approvals necessary and the pond, which is why we all came back to the table here, was because of the pond.
Right.
Wigeon Grass.
So I would like to see the finished proposal on the plan, as you've talked about, meeting with the hydrologist and the other consultants that Jim Martin has mentioned, and see the final plan because it seems like you're going to have to have the final details on this plan for the pond to go forward to the Regional Water Control Board and Army Corps of Engineers. And so we should have that for consideration for our approval.
Okay.
And on to the city council after us.
Right. So, and I am in agreement with this, that the pond is sort of the nexus of it, and if it's not resolved, then I don't feel the whole thing is resolved. So I'm with you on that, Phyllis. And that would then direct us to saying we would create a motion here, directing staff to conduct additional environmental review as necessary and come back to us at a date uncertain at this point.
Can we name the experts that we want?
Yeah, let me hear what Adam has to say.
Well, I just want to, I want to be clear that when you say additional environmental review as necessary, I'm just picking up on it. So what, the way I interpret that, you're saying if the pond plan can be resolved with Jim, we come, you know, and this, the professionals, then we're looking at the project as, and that's, it comes up as a yes, then we're looking at a yes, sorry, as the project as proposed. Do you want to wait? I mean, are there going to be other changes? Should staff expect other changes to the rest of the project? Because it doesn't, for us to do environmental, additional environmental analysis and review, we need to know what the totality of the project really is. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to piecemeal it off in pieces and say, all right, well, we've looked at the pond, but now that things are changing, you know, that's why we haven't done really any full analysis to this point. So I would like to get some...
And I appreciate that. I think that when we started talking about this pond, it changed the structure of the hotel to some degree. So the pond affects the structure of the hotel. That's really what has happened. So to Phyllis's point, she doesn't want to consider the totality of it without the pond resolved and that...
Okay. So maybe I'm just misunderstanding the environmental review. We're talking about just getting the analysis, the actual professional assessment and that there's, may change the design of the pond and sort of make sure that there can be the proper functioning of the water cycling through the pond and create, that that's feasible, but beyond that, we'll wait until, so we'll do that, that's step one.
Right.
And then step two or three, come back and then we'll talk about, give you an answer.
Exactly.
I think, just to repeat what Jim had said earlier, he thinks it is feasible. It's not a matter of that it's probably will work, it's just a matter of getting the right details and the professional involved to make this, make sure it's actually been worked out in the level of attention given to it by a professional. So I don't expect, you know, we'll see, maybe there are some changes that need to be made in terms of the engineering of it and so on, but that likely come back.
Okay. I do want to ask you a question, and that is that in, I think the Renisson Hotel reply that the idea of a parking lot underneath the building is proven to be, I think, just too big of a mountain to climb, so to speak.
Yeah.
And that, I think, I asked you, or we asked the applicant about the settling and so forth of the property, and it was indicated to be at a certain amount, and I think you had said you were, had some information from Mr. Bracken about that. Sorry to spring that on you, but I think that that was something we had talked about.
Right.
And I don't know if that's, I just want to be clear that that's off the table, if that is in fact the case.
If what?
Number one, is this, is the settling issue something that the town can address?
Right.
Mr. Bracken, or is it something that we need to look at as a part of this approval because of what is an engineering standard and what will happen with this property over time?
Well, you know, generally, so right now, what we have is, in terms of the way the building is going to be, the built or proposed to be built, there's a geotechnical analysis was prepared, and there's different options proposed for how you could anchor, you could either drill piers down to bedrock, you can float it, you know, in terms of doing a mat slab, and that's what's been described as the potential way to do this project. And I believe the applicant has said that they, they're leaning that direction, but there's going to have to be further design level geotechnical analysis before they come up with a final plan. Usually that takes place at the building phase. Now, the implication of either one is, as I understand it, and I'm not an expert on this, but drilled piers will keep the building in place, you know, it will anchor the building in place to bedrock, but what you end up having is the rest of it, the parking lots and everything around the building will settle, and you'll have this differential settlement issue. Another, the mat slab option is essentially more of a, you try to balance out the weight between fill, you know, it's sort of a complex calculation by the engineer, but potentially that means you lighten the load under the building by over excavating or creating some sort of space below the structure, whether it's a crawl space or a basement. I mean, it can be done other ways. That's as much as I really know about it.
All right.
And, you know, those aren't, you know, I'm not certain what the implications are for that in terms of doing...
I don't want to detour too far into this, but I wanted to just sort of see where that stood relative to what had been discussed.
Well, in terms of, yeah, in discussing with, with Dave Bracken, who knows much more about the settlement issues in town, the mat slab option may be, may actually work out and be more beneficial. I think you have to worry about, the problem with that is you've got to worry about the building itself having differential settlement within the building itself, depending on how much fill, how much fill is compacted and the, and the different soil composition at different locations. So you really have to be careful about how you design the soil.
And the reason for my questioning that is just really what is the structure that we're looking at here? And what does this building look like? And that's why it was important, I thought, to bring it up, was, does the building change because of the structural requirements? And that's why it was up.
Right. No, I think it has more to do with how much dirt you move around and where you move it around and sort of the...
So I would say that where we stand then is that we want this pond design flushed out and made real and made possible, and that becomes a part of the project proposal so that we're looking at something that is a complete proposal with a functional design for a pond. Right? Okay. So that's what we're asking for. So we would...
We don't need a motion, do we?
No.
Okay. So that's where we stand right now.
Okay.
Thank you. We're going to take a 10-minute break. Thank you. I want to first thank all of you for being patient. I'm sorry that we're starting at such a late hour, but this is an important topic, and I'm glad to see all of you here. So regardless of your position, thank you for turning out tonight and coming to voice what you have to say. So the second part of this continued hearing tonight for the record is 5200 Paradise Drive, the Marin Montessori School, continued public hearing to review all project information, including new information from the applicant in response to public comment and commission direction raised at the May 23, 2017 public hearing regarding an initial study mitigated negative declaration, general plan amendment, rezoning, amendment to the current use permit and design review for addition and modifications to Marin Montessori School located at 5200 5168 and 5164 Paradise Drive. So we're going to pick up kind of where we left off. I think that there's a number of things that Mr. Kennings will present. I know that the commissioners have a number of questions, and I'm sure that there's plenty of comment out there for this. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kennings and have at it.
Chair members of the commission, I guess we're having a little bit of a technical issue here, but just to reiterate, this is continued public hearing for the Marin Montessori School to review all project information, including new information from the applicant in response to public comment and commission direction raised at the May 23, 2017 public hearing regarding an initial study mitigated deck, general plan amendment, rezoning amendment to the current use permit and design review for additions and modifications to 5200 5168 and 5164 Paradise Drive. So there we are. Those are the entitlements that they're requesting. Thank you very much. Marin Montessori School purchased 5164 Paradise Drive, which is a residentially zoned property with the purpose of converting it to school uses as part of their campus. Design review for the new construction, amendment to the conditional use permit and the CEQA analysis. I'm going to do my best to sort of go through this really quickly because I realize it's late, and I think the applicant, they have a document that they'd like to speak to, and I think that's probably the crux of this meeting. So just to go over it for anyone who hasn't seen it, it's a two-phase project, no increase in student or staff. Right now, their, their max cap is 232 students. I think they're at 225. They're proposing renovation of the existing residential structures at 5164, mostly interior modification, some exterior for bathrooms in the cottage, decks, translucent, all-weather sort of awning covers for the decks, internal circulation, proposed drop-off and pickup cul-de-sac expansion, which would help queuing during drop-off and pickup by adding an additional one or two cars in that circulation. They're adding three new parking spaces to 5164 for all-day staff parking. In phase two, they'll do the new upper elementary classroom, which is 2,300 square feet, which will replace the domes structures, and after the demolition and replacement, it's about 125 square feet over existing. Project also includes...
Project also includes BCDC path improvements and extension of about 100 feet or so eastward to a new viewing platform. They are working with BCDC currently to get that permit. And then the project also includes traffic control and transportation demand management measures. Here's the campus. On the left, there's the west campus, on the right is the east campus, 5164 is on the far right, parking, loading, cul-de-sac. Here's the proposed landscape plan and circulation plan. Part of the project includes renovation of an interior multi-use room. Once those, once 5164 is incorporated into the project, classroom space will move to the east, they'll have a multipurpose room for after-school plays, indoor activities. There's the new upper elementary and the increase in the cul-de-sac for pickup and drop-off. This is the existing 5164, that's the existing cottage on 5164, that's the new upper elementary classroom, replacing the domes. And we can always go back to any of these images, obviously. This would be your views coming down Robin Drive and Paradise Drive of the new upper elementary classroom, no real view impacts to San Francisco Bay. So at the last hearing, the planning commission had five basic requests. They wanted sort of an understanding of the current and proposed traffic conditions, including historical and existing traffic studies, conditions of approval, how the applicant had been working with nearby uses, Marin Country Day School and the Preserve, which is a project that is in the works right now. They wanted an assessment of potential traffic calming measures and/or pedestrian circulation modes, methods, opportunities. The planning commission asked staff to respond to comment letters that were submitted on the initial study, that we didn't have time to do a response document. The commission also asked about enrollment, what are the needs of the school, what are the needs of the student population, how does the school work at this campus location, and would the school consider an alternate location? They also asked for an analysis, the existing noise study, including a five-day sort of long-term period, of which the applicant had their consultant do with the three days, which they did, and they have a submittal that they'll speak to today. In response, the applicant has submitted a cover letter, their written responses to the planning commission and the noise study, and I believe they have their consultant here to talk about that acoustic presentation. Staff also has the town's consultant, Michael Phil, who was here at the last hearing, he can also answer questions if you want to have a peer review or some question for staff in that sense. So, essentially getting down to the whole issue in the staff report is the analysis of this traffic, parking, pedestrian safety. Obviously, there's a lot of neighbor concerns with traffic, circulation congestion, parking, staff parking restrictions, staff parking requirements, on and off-site parking, what's their cooperation with the Marin Country Day School, pedestrian safety. In the staff report, you'll note that we went through the past condition of, conditions of approval for the last three sort of main campus projects. In 1997, the main condition of approval was an enrollment cap that, as far as staff could tell, that the applicant complied with that condition of approval, capped it at 209. In 2003, there was also an enrollment cap, they kept it at 209. There was a requirement for carpooling, there were several conditions that talked about carpooling, and there was also a condition about a parent contract that would, you know, sort of be, I don't know how it would be enforced, but something that the Marin Montessori School would provide that would, you know, restrict people to using carpooling or what have you. And staff doesn't really have any sort of indication of whether or not these carpooling requirements or this parent contract was ever enforced. It is noted that the school went over the enrollment cap in 2003, and that's part of why, the reason why they had to do a lot of traffic studies for their 2014 use permit, which also had an enrollment cap and required them to do the queuing surveys. Since 2014, the school has complied with those conditions of approval, providing their survey results for the queuing and providing their yearly enrollment. One of the issues that was raised just recently was a revision of the W Trans memo that the school provided for their traffic, and the major revision of that was that school employees had been directed not to park on Paradise Drive, but to find available parking on other areas. Again, the traffic memo, there is no, there's no net addition to traffic or any circulation issues, because they're actually reducing congestion, reducing circulation by increasing their drop-off and parking cul-de-sac. There's a discussion about drop-off pickup times, staggering coordinating with other schools in the area, and again, the question about nearby projects. Marin Country Day is providing additional parking, they're also providing a multi-use path. The town is, I believe, employing a new multi-use path farther to the west, and then the Preserve is also talking about having a requirement to do a multi-use pass. All these would be on the south side of Paradise Drive, opposite the school and farther to the west. This sort of just gives you kind of a lay of the land, sort of the Preserve project down there at the bottom on the right, Marin Country Day School at the bottom on the left. Right now, currently, the Montessori School is enforcing a no parking on Paradise Drive on the south side. The arrows indicate how they've directed their parents, how to do queuing off Robin and then onto the project site, into the cul-de-sac, and then again, west and out onto Paradise Drive. The applicant obviously submitted some noise, acoustic presentation materials. We talked about sort of what's the noise ordinance, what's the baseline, 50 dBa is the condition that we've talked about. You'll see in the applicant's noise study that it's pretty consistent with that baseline condition of 50. Again, the consultant will explain, you know, what's the ambient baseline levels. Again, the initial study addressed what's the baseline ambient condition and how to enforce administrative controls and how to enforce mitigation measures that would limit school impacts or noise impacts from the school if it was on 5164 Paradise Drive. Do you want to reiterate what we've seen from the applicant, that after school hours, after 3 o'clock, all activities on 5164 would be moved to that multipurpose room to the west side of campus? So in effect, 5164 would become sort of a, you know, an inactive space, it wouldn't have active children play or teaching or anything like that. Again, sort of the crux of this whole project is the general plan amendment and the rezoning of the project site. Implementation program LU27A sets forth the town policy that allows school uses in a residential zone to be permitted. But again, the R1 zoning does not allow school uses at this time, so instead of trying to revise R1 district to allow schools, the school is requesting a rezone to PSP, but then the general plan would be inconsistent with the zoning, so they're going to amend the general plan to both be PSP for the same property. We talked about it last time, the two provisions of policy LU27 that allow school uses in a residential neighborhood, that you have to achieve land use compatibility, and that you have to avoid unsafe traffic or public safety conditions. Again, the initial study talks about noise and traffic impacts and how to mitigate those conditions. There are no real traffic impacts, because there's actually a net reduction in traffic and circulation, but again, the school is voluntarily imposing some parking restrictions, traffic and total measures, including TDMs in their application to help offset those things, the concept of traffic congestion and circulation issues. Real quickly, we went through the initial study last time, we got no new comments since the last one. You know, there were some issues that were addressed in the document that are less than significant with mitigation measures addressed. There is an MMRP, mitigation monitoring report program, that the applicant has agreed to enforce those mitigation measures. And then we did get those letters from the Marin Montessori School, from Caltrans, from BCDC, and a letter from the neighbor, Jim Simon. It's not directly about the initial study, but we still addressed it in the document. I can go over those things now, or we can just talk about them later, but essentially, there was a comment from Caltrans about imposing certain kind of restrictions, conditions on the applicant, and I think the biggest one was crosswalks, having two crosswalks across Paradise Drive, and I think it's, I'll let Adam speak to it, but my understanding is it's a public works issue, that it's not something that they would want to work with at this time. This, I'm sorry, this is the Caltrans condition for the crosswalks? Oh, that's correct. So, just to update, I mean, we did go back based on commission direction and talk with Public Works Department, Dave Bracken, he's a town engineer. He and the town manager went out to Paradise Drive, looked at the site, and the response that I received, or report, was agreed that we should report on this evening, was that generally a crosswalk, just a standalone crosswalk, is not acceptable to the town engineer due to safety concerns, unless there's actually a traffic control, a traffic light actually installed. That would be the only way to assure that there would be proper ability to stop, and that cars would be signaled to stop through an actual traffic light. Specific location of that, potentially, you know, you want to do it in a location with the greatest site distance, both east and west, and, you know, the specific location hasn't gotten further than that, but it was sort of discussed in those ways. So, the crosswalk that Caltrans at least was proposing is sort of, I think, not adequate in the way that they actually commented on it.
Suffice to say then, it's a separate piece of work, action, study progressing with the Public Works Department that may or may not result in a stoplight or a crosswalk there, but it's being reviewed, it's being studied, it's being discussed.
That's right.
And as a part of the pathway plan they expended.
Yes.
So, it is something we can't really impose or put upon this project, because it is separate and it is unrelated, so to speak.
Well, yeah, I mean, in a sense, it's sort of just a matter of timing. If we had developed a full, if we were at the point where we had a full developed plan that we were looking at implementing, then there may be some relationship, but at this point in time, it's just, you know, there's limited things that can be done, and I don't think the Public Works Department is ready to sort of say, here's the exact things that we want to get done in this manner, with proper study in engineering, and therefore, you know, there's a ready-to-go project but for somebody to do it. So it's, you know, those things could develop over time, but I, yes, to answer your question, it's not, it's not sort of a actionable request at this point.
All right, thank you. So, Sean.
Okay. So again, you know, we've addressed those comments in the letter and in the staff report. Happy to answer questions later, but I don't know if we need to go through every one of them.
No, I'm going to ask the other commissioners if they have questions for you right now, and I will start with Jennifer and see if she has something to ask of staff at this time.
No, I don't think so.
Nicolo, do you want to ask something of Sean?
Yes, please. There was some material that came that, I can't pinpoint which one, which suggested that there may be some past conditions of approval that were not met, and/or if there are existing site violations which are causing or that are big.
So the conditions of approval that we were able to sort of review, like I said, there was a use permit in 1998, and again, in 2003. If you read through the staff report, they're very specific to enrollment caps, but they're also about, you know, some of these TDM measures that you would call now. The ones in 2003 are, I don't know how you would enforce them the way they're written, because they're kind of like, you know, strongly encouraged and they're kind of funny language that you would put as a condition of approval.
Sure.
So, I think the action that was, in 2014, there was an attempt to rectify some of those issues previously through traffic studies and traffic reports and enrollment caps. So I think it's here as the administrative record to just show, this is what was required of them before, we don't know if it's really been enforced.
Implemented.
I think it's better for the applicant actually to speak to some of those things.
Okay. Just to clarify my question, so as far as staff is concerned, there's nothing out of compliance?
Right.
Okay, yeah, that's good. And then.
I'll just maybe dovetail on a little bit of what Sean was saying. Commissioner Caldera, if you refer to page three, four, and five of the staff report, we've outlined the conditions of approval from the past, from the three resolutions that Sean mentions, and so we've outlined the conditions of approval, and then the title that says implementation, and basically what the applicant has done or has not done regarding those conditions of approval. And, you know, in general, I think they have followed the majority of them. Middle of page five talks about, there's no records of this, as Sean mentioned, you know, the setting up a parent penalty mechanism if parents fail to do the traffic mitigation system, if they fail to carpool, there was a request that the school penalize the parents in some way, and they have no indication that they've done that. Outside of that, they generally have. And I just wanted to say two, three things I left on your places that arrived kind of late. One is comments received post-packet, so that's a number of comments that we received after Friday. Secondly, Commissioner Medcalf asked for the minutes from a previous planning commission meeting, so I provided those at her request. And then thirdly, I gave you a traffic summary, just pulled together this afternoon, of the various traffic studies that have been done over the past, in the past, and the mitigations and suggestions and recommendations of those traffic studies. And if you see it, in general, they've been asking for the same thing for years, and one could argue the school has been doing those things for years, and one could argue that maybe they haven't been doing them as much as people would like, whether that's staggering the schedule, encouraging carpooling, and so on, escorting kids from north to south to make the carpoles run better. I'm sure the applicant has more about that. And then lastly, I believe Commissioner Medcalf asked for the various schedules for Marin Montessori, Marin Country Day, and Cove, that's on page six. List of the projects that are happening in the area, that's on page seven, and conditions of approval that we've, if you choose to forward recommendation with conditions of approval, page 11 has what we think are the most pertinent ones to the application.
I'd like to finish my question. One more, we already spoke about this the last time, I just want to re-record. Is anything on this project code-wise which triggers parking and traffic that you know?
Anything on this project, correct. This project does not increase students nor staff, therefore, the project does not require additional parking. The project meets the current parking regulations based upon what the applicant has given us.
Okay, so the problem of traffic and parking could be addressed anytime for many reasons, but not necessarily for this project or when they apply for some remodeling, unless there are new buildings I'm talking about. I'm just trying to.
It's. It's actually, yeah, I mean, it's a, if I can, it's a relevant question because basically, you're speaking to sort of the findings related to the conditional use permit.
That's right.
And so, the conditional use permit requires that you meet findings, and it requires that the conditions under which those, that permit is granted are followed. And if at any time, there's violations of those conditions, or for whatever reason there are, relates mostly to, and I don't want the specific language, but health, safety issues related to a granting of a conditional use permit, those things can be reviewed, again, by the commission at any time if they so choose, or if it so chooses. So, it's sort of an ongoing review, if you will, of those, of that permit. That permit is, in a sense, it's especially depending upon the conditions placed on the operation of a particular use is a sort of an active permit.
Yeah, sure.
In terms of its, whether, you know, in terms of its review, I would say.
One last thing, I want to know your opinion. If the parking and the traffic and the whole deal is such a big issue, why do you think that the people that live in the area, they just wait for the project when there's a remodeling or, you know, something like that, to come forth and say, you know, this is unacceptable, we can't live with it? Why is so, do you think?
I think it's a, I mean-
Just because it's the only opportunity for you to force them to fix it, or-
Well, there's a couple, I mean, there's, we're hypothesizing a little bit, but it's obviously a very formal opportunity to have public review and comment, and there are formal opportunities to appear in front of the bodies such as the planning commission or eventually the town council. That said, there are other opportunities there. And I think that's mostly it. I think there's, that would be my guess, but I don't know. I think if you would ask the commenters, there may be other times when they, there have been comments in between or informal comments or what have you about situations over there on Paradise Drive at various times. But, this offers sort of a, it's a microphone, it's a, you know, it's a little bit more of a formal setting, and maybe there's more opportunity to be heard.
Because realistically, the size of the issue, it's so big that you cannot fix it just by being one lot. I mean, it would have to be like a conjunction, town, people, businesses, I mean, everybody, because otherwise, you just fix a little bit, but, you know, the problem still exists. So, I'm just puzzled because it is a big issue, and I know that everybody wants to fix it, and this is an opportunity to do so, but even if they say, okay, well, we're going to just change, widen the little stretch of road, it's not going to change anything. I mean, you're still going to have the problems before and right after. I mean, it's not, and plus, what can they do, really? I mean, there's no land, I mean, area that you can really create a ton of parkings. And so, I'm just trying to see what needs to be addressed here really strongly. I mean, anyway.
Well, thank you, Nicolo. I think that we're going to get into some of that, and we're going to get into figuring out what we can do about those issues, right? By the record, the traffic and the enrollment, none of that is changing. So, what is the issue is the current condition out there that's being addressed because there's an application before us. And with that application before us, we have an opportunity to install some measures to control that or to address it, and then set up continuing measures to do so if need be, or if we see fit. So, we can do that, as Adam just said, create measures that get followed in perpetuity to address the traffic, unless Marin Montessori School moves. So, that's really it. I mean, it is, whether the school gets remodeled or not, what happens out there now is a separate condition from the change to the school. I mean, it goes on, that traffic condition goes on right now between the two schools consistently. So, what we've asked of staff is to present some information that shows what the two schools are doing together, and how we can look at that and decide how to continue that, enhance that, or ask them to follow that, or create a better program for managing the traffic. So, it's within our grasp to address it.
As a condition of approval?
Yes.
If we decide so?
Yes.
But, it's not a given-
Right.
-condition of approval, because it's not triggered.
Sorry, it's not a what?
It's not triggered by the work legally. It's something that we can ask, but it's not forceful mandated that you need to, you know, it's like if you're adding a building, then you need to provide parking.
All right.
So, there has to be a connection, there has to be a nexus between, yes, but, I mean, if you, if there's something specific you want us to get back to you, and whether or not that fits under this category, we can do so. We may need some time to address it, but we're happy to review a specific request in that matter.
Yeah, sure. Let's see what happens.
Okay. Thank you, Nicolo. Dr. Bundy?
I forgot if it was Caltrans or just a comment from one of the neighbors about the suggestion of a flashing sign about the school that would flash maybe when pickup and drop off and would be on other times during the school and off after-school hours. This would be up on Paradise as you were driving west coming down that hill.
There's a, there's a whole toolbox of, you know, traffic control, traffic calming devices that the town can choose to move forward with. And the town can do that with its own money, with Marin Montessori's money, and Marin Country Day's money, or some combination. I don't, you know, whether, I think the best way to address those traffic control measures in a broad way is to have Public Works staff, you know, research that and determine what's the best way to reach the goals of the town in terms of traffic calming in this area. But certainly, flashing lights and speed is one option.
Actually, it was looked at. I think, to a certain extent, the response was, again, in the same vein as the only way to get a crosswalk was to have a traffic light. There was some conclusion from Dave Bracken and also Todd from a traffic enforcement perspective and his background in that, was that the best thing would be one of those signs that flashes and says how fast you're going in comparison to the actual speed limit, and that seems to work very well. So, if you have one of those sort of east of the schools as you're coming west around the turns, that may be, they thought that would be probably the most effective traffic slowing measure to put in, in the short term. And seemed comfortable with that as a potential solution, so, or potential, you know, one of the things that they could do.
Thank you. Philo?
Just to follow up on what Bob asked about, weren't there some issues upon which we were hemmed in as far as our decision-making on the street itself because it's also, was it a state? Caltrans has something over that street, wasn't there?
I don't believe so, no.
I don't believe Caltrans has jurisdiction over Paradise Drive. In their letter, they state their goals, and their general goals is to reduce, you know, automobile use and increase safety for pedestrians and bicycles. And I think their comment is, you know, we would like this project to do whatever it can to make pedestrian and bicycle access better. They don't necess, I don't believe they said, you know, this is our road and we want X, Y, and Z.
I thought it was some kind of a state route or something like that.
I don't think it's a scenic road.
Oh, it isn't? Okay, because I've heard that it's been a scenic road and I didn't know. So, in other words, it's up to the town to make its own decisions and find the money wherever to go forward. I was going to bring up about the minutes that I had discussed with you this morning. I had a vague recollection of before the 2014 changes were made, that the previous headmaster had come before us and actually wanted to increase the student population to 250. And I spent a couple of hours going through old minutes, and Phil went through old minutes, and I found them from March 27th of 2012. And at that meeting, the then-headmaster mentioned during his presentation, because remember you were limited to 2000, 209 students at the time, that the enrollment had already increased to 220 over the past couple of years, and now they wanted to add 30 more to make it 250. Didn't go over well with us. On page 13 of your response, I don't know what you call it. Let me just find out what you call it so we're all on the same page. Marin Montessori School Submittal Information and Response to Planning Commission. On page 13, there's a chart that shows the enrollment from 1997 up to this school year. It doesn't show that in 2011 and '12, '12 and '13, that the school was over in its total enrollment. All of a sudden, these 20 extra students disappeared. And it makes me uncomfortable because if this information is wrong, what other information is wrong in this report? I want, you know, we're supposed to make our decision on the information we've received. I am sure that staff wrote, the staff report, based on information that the school gave you. And yet, here are, you know, nine pages of minutes with discussions of the fact that there wasn't a traffic study, that when the then-head, whatever his name, whoever preceded Sam, found out about this, he was asked if he had done anything to put the enrollment population back where it should go, and he answered straight out, no, we just moved ahead. And, as I say, also at that time, and it doesn't show in the minutes because it came up afterwards, and Dan Bell, who was then the director, the school was asked to make semi-annual reports of enrollment. Obviously, we did not allow the increase. We didn't turn it down, we continued it to a time uncertain until we could get the information. And that's when you came back in 2014 with some studies and stuff. But, there was supposed to be the semi-annual reports of enrollment so we could keep an eye on it. And we haven't really gotten there. I mean, there have been a couple of annual ones, but not semi-annual ones. And I remember the discussion because there was confusion whether or not semi-annual and biannual meant the same thing, so it's always stuck in my mind as someone who learned English language very directly. So, the point is, you know, what did you take care of? Have you taken care of the other things? We know what happened with the landscaping, that the trees died, nobody did anything about it. And you're right that you're going to take care of it now.
So, this is, you know, that's to the applicant now, so we're talking staff. We're going to get the applicant up here shortly, so, as soon as we can.
But, in the staff, but I just want to verify with you, your staff report is based generally on information you received through the applicant. Is that correct?
Well, the applicant obviously submits the information to part of their application, and, you know, we've done our own surveys and our own analysis, and we've done an initial study, so we've done-
But, as far as the data and stuff, you-
That is, that's generally correct, but to answer your question-
You rely on them.
If you look on page, I guess it's not in the staff report, but the last condition of approval in 2014, it says their condition of approval was annual surveys.
It was actually semi-annual, but I know it got changed. But, in your report, you mentioned several times that there was no increase in enrollment, you know, between 2003 and 2013 or something, and it's given-
Yeah, I can clarify that.
...a couple of times. So, I think it's important to find out what happened to the students, because we told them when they were before us-
Yeah, I think, I think the applicant can probably, possibly can address that, that person is no longer with the school. So, in terms, in terms of the applicant and the school providing, or abiding by the enrollment cap, we did use the chat, the table that they provided, assumed that table was correct. It certainly is, they did not include the overage that happened at that one particular time. I think Ms. Metcalf is correct in terms of, you know, that was brought to the attention of the school, that they had gone over their limit, and it appears that they corrected that because, because following that, they came back to the planning commission, and the planning commission gave them an extension on their enrollment to 230 students.
Right. Two thirty-two.
Two thirty-two, thank you. So, that's-
Okay, so-
Yeah, I, my, I'd say my concern is there are things in the staff report that are incorrect because of the data given you was incorrect, and I think at some point, it should be corrected just for the records. But, it also, as I say, I'm sorry, it makes me wonder about some of the other data, is that all, is that correct?
We'll get this-
From the applicant, this is from the applicant.
Do you have a specific, do you have a specific data point that you're-
Well, I've got so many things highlighted in yellow, I can't find anything. I did find the information on the trees. And the policies regarding lighting, apparently the lights, the exterior lights were to be shut off at night, and they haven't been, but you've made an effort for a while since you've been there.
So, there is a response in the-
But, apparently, the effort has not continued.
So, do you want to ask staff anything about that right now, or, because I'd like to get the application from, or the-
Okay, why don't we have the applicant talk, because these are really information that the applicant's providing.
They have plenty of information they want to give us, so, if I may, then, let's please proceed with whoever from the applicant would like to start first. So, Sam?
Well, thank you, commissioners, again. I appreciate the late night, again, and thank you for folks coming out and staying, staying late tonight. Look forward to being able to address the concerns Commissioner Metcalf just brought up, as well as some of the other questions that have come up. I think I'll just dive right in. I wasn't planning to go right to the section that Commissioner Metcalf mentioned. And as you mentioned, Commissioner Metcalf, this is my second year, so I'm getting caught up with a great team who's helping me out. We actually dispute that that's inaccurate information that we gave you on the chart. That's up-to-date information. And in fact, it does show the over-enrollment, if you look, line 13 and 14 for 2009 through 2010, and 2008 and 2009. Oh, excuse me, that's page 13 of our, of our response.
And you said what lines?
Lines 13 and 14. It shows that we are over. And that is the most accurate information that's based exactly in our directory.
And those were yours, they didn't tell us about.
We won't get into, just let them go on. So, I got it, we've got it circled right here.
Yeah.
It says 215 and 216. So, okay.
What's certainly important, Commissioner Metcalf, is I would also be, become suspicious of data if I thought one piece had been falsely fed, but I really want to very clear, this is not false information. There's no at all desire to obfuscate any truth. We're absolutely committed to providing accurate information. So, I'm concerned that that might, you may be color with that, so you can see that.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Should I just proceed with my-
Please do, yes.
Okay. Well, again, thank you for being with us tonight. We want to be very cognizant of your time and our community's time. So, my plan is just to briefly remind you of why this is such an important project for us, our commitments. You have our written responses that are extensive to your questions from last time. I thought I would just summarize in brief the main points. So, I think the first thing I just want to talk about is why this is such an important project for us. It's vital for us to meet approval from this commission so we can fulfill our mission as a nonprofit Montessori school. One of the main reasons is- One of the main reasons is we need to modernize and upgrade, that we talked about before, the domes are really outdated. We need to prepare for, for rising sea levels, and these, these domes do need to be changed out. Most importantly, we need to improve the teaching and condition, teaching and learning conditions at our school. Right now, our after-school and before-school setup prevents teachers from working after school in their classrooms, meeting with students privately. We also have no space for a learning specialist, which is very important. She's now housed under our stairs in the lobby. And by making this change to 5164, we'll gain a very, very much-needed multipurpose space for indoor physical education, for drama and music, for before and after-school care. That before and after-school care will become on the west side of campus, which will make the east side quieter. And this will really help us fulfill our mission ultimately as, as the school we need to be by having this space. Finally, what's most important about 5164 is it helps us create a elementary wing of campus. And in Montessori education, multi-age collaboration is vital. Right now, as I spoke about last time, our elementary classes are on separate sides of the campus. So, to truly be the school we set out to be in our mission statement, we need this. This will make us whole. Without increasing enrollment, and no intention to do so in the future, by increasing parking on campus, we become complete as a school and fulfill our mission. That is really what's so, so important, having this multi-age elementary wing that allows us to be the school we're meant to be. The last thing I just want to say before going on is that, that I stand before you, my second year as head of school, with an incredible team, absolutely committed to, to work with the town on, on improving traffic and safety in any way we can, but also to always uphold our, our commitment to the conditions of approval. So, if there's been questions in the past, which I am happy to address for the school, I want to just let you know, we are completely committed to being a school with integrity and honoring the conditions of approval as they come forward. So, coming to just a few questions that came up, traffic study summary, the staff, Phil Boyle offered that, the summary for us already. I think the key points that I would like to highlight are that, both from the W Trans traffic study and the Preisey Traffic Transportation Study, David Preisey is here tonight as well to answer your questions. There is, our parking study, there are no conditions that were deemed unsafe, and that there's currently no need to provide additional parking at MMS. And in fact, our project will increase on-campus parking and campus queuing. Our improvements are also working. We work closely with Marin Country Day School, and did two things that have been really important. One is that, as was been mentioned, we've moved all employee campus off of Paradise Drive. They no longer may park there. And we've also found an off-site location to park all of our school vehicles. After the last commission meeting, when a number of neighbors said that those improvements hadn't been working, or worked for a short time, I went back and talked to the head of school at Marin, uh, Marin Country Day School, and she went ahead and spoke with all of her employees, and instructed them to stop parking on the south side of Paradise in front of our school. And it's really worked. And I just want to show for your perusal photos that we've taken, June 6, June 8, and June 9, at different times in the day, that I, if you need more, I think that's enough. Will show that in our work with coordinating with Marin Country Day School, as well as our new traffic, our parking policies, it's really working. And the public parking is no longer being used at all in the way it was. Additionally, I'd like to just finally state that Marin Country Day School has said that this August, they will be adding approximately 50 new parking spaces, which will make the conditions on, on Paradise even that much better. The second point, the commissioners asked us to look, look at was around the MCDs crossover bridge, and could we use that to increase our pedestrian safety. Marin Country Day School let us know that because of their security needs and the points of access, this will actually not be available or even helpful to MMS. The, this would put non-Marin Country Day School people in the heart of their campus, and that's a security problem. But also, even if our folks use that crossover bridge, they would still have to cross Paradise to get there. Regarding the Caltrans suggestions, the staff already addressed this, but I just want to let you know that I have met personally with, with Central Marin Police, the Cordera Town Manager, the Director of Public Works, and Marin Country Day School to work on finding ways to improve traffic and safety and parking on Paradise Drive. And we continue to be absolutely committed to working positively and contributively. The draft condition of approval that Caltrans wrote would require us to help pay for a study of traffic calming and improvement measures, and upon approval, we are ready to support this. A commissioner asked about public transportation, and whether we would utilize that, and we absolutely would. And since 2013, when we added some school vans, we've transported an average of 15 students from and to San Francisco each day, taking an average of 15 cars off the road with that transportation. So, we're committed to doing what we can. Regarding the sound study and data, noise studies met or exceed industry standards, and the findings and proposed mitigations were peer-reviewed and verified as appropriate by an independent sound engineer who works for the town. Those two consultants are here tonight to give you a more thorough explanation of their study. I would like to add, though, that the mitigation measures we've agreed to, we've agreed to significant operational restrictions, we're relocating after-school care to the other side of campus, and there will be very limited use generally on 5164. The classrooms will be closed in the weekends, holidays, summers, and most teachers and students leave by 3:30 during the, during, during the school day. So, in, in doing the math, our classrooms will be closed for over half the days of the year. And we also agreed to pay for two years of sound monitoring, to ensure we're being, we're being held accountable by ourselves. Another question was asked about mitigating sound, excuse me, noise from construction. We are proposing only a modest remodel that will last, last only a few weeks. There will be substantially less construction activity than a typical residential development, and the town has laid out strident, or stringent, sound mitigation measures that we will follow. One neighbor suggested that we move our school, or break up our program. We have owned and carefully developed our school property for over 46 years on its current location. We have nowhere else to go, nor do we have a desire to go anywhere else. We do have a small 50-person junior high campus in a, in a building we lease in North San Rafael, but that's, that's, I think, was the idea that we could move there. It's a, it's a small building space we lease. Collaboration and multi-age learning is a cornerstone of Montessori education, and we are a complete toddler through elementary campus. We do not want to break that up. Further, our administrative hub needs to be at the Cordera campus, because the Cordera campus houses approximately 80% of our students, and the admin team there frequently needs to be together and also monitor the car line. Question was raised about demographics, and again, I would submit to you, this is accurate data here that we've given you. On average, we have educated 32 Cordera children every year for the last 20 years. That's an average of 15.24% of our enrollment. If we go by the district, which includes Larkspur children and Cordera children, we've educated an average of 42 children every year at an annual enrollment rate of 20.5%. In total, we've educated well over 300 children from Cordera, and 125 from Larkspur in our time. Finally, we're a nonprofit school that offers a world-class Montessori education for all children. We award approximately $1 million in tuition assistance every year to make this education accessible for all families. And even though those who do not live in our town, but whose children go to our school, it's important to note, we do have those families, of course. They contribute to the local economy by frequenting our shops, buying services, signing up for after-school programs, and many of our families volunteer Ring Mountain Restoration, ages senior living, for example, our places our families volunteer, many of whom don't live in Cordera. The question about the impact of the Preserve's proposed project, the town staff was going to report on this, but we have good contact and cooperative relations, relationships with Aimco, and I've attended some of their public meetings. Regarding neighbor outreach, we've made extensive efforts to engage with our neighbors since beginning this project, numerous community individual meetings, along with commitment to address neighbor requests, especially regarding lighting, landscape work timing, and parking on Paradise. Much of our plan has been influenced by neighborhood input, especially our noise mitigation parking plans, to name a few. And I've met personally with Jim and Hildy Simons on numerous occasions, as well as had numerous correspondence with Sue Derry. One question Commissioner Metcalf raised was about the lighting. We have addressed every lighting concern that's been brought to us, and feel confident we meet the conditions of approval. A neighbor still continues to say we don't, but there hasn't been specific explanations of details about what, what we are not doing. We, in fact, after our first community meeting, hired an electrician to change wiring so we could have an ever-on lobby light turned off, and all lights are on timers. So, it's still unclear what the concerns are, but we ready, we're ready to address them if, if neighbors are more specific. And that gets to the final piece of, some neighbors have suggested we do not follow our promises. And I would say, as the staff has said tonight, I think an analysis of the staff reports bears out that we do follow our promises. And there, in the past, there have been a couple of places where we did not meet everything to the letter, and this was likely due to a series of normal leadership changes. And in fact, we have learned from that, and it changed our onboarding process, so that now whenever a new senior manager comes onto Marin Montessori, he or she will be given an overview of our conditions of approval to, to learn, so that we can stay consistent in, in our commitments. I can, as, just say, as the school's new head of school, that we are 100% committed to our, to the conditions of approval and our commitments to the town and our neighbors. For example, again, the lighting issue came up, and we immediately had that fixed from what the neighbors had asked for. It is true that we found after the last planning commission meeting that we did have a CUP from 2003 that had us planting and maintaining three willow trees. We did plant those. You can see them here on the left. It does show that we did plant the three willow trees. And over time, what happened was with brackish shoreline water, two died, there's still one there. And we did not notice that and replant that, so that, that was our error. But we did plant the trees, they eventually died. We did not, did not plant them. But as I mentioned in my letter to you, we've consulted with an arborist since our last meeting. We have about four trees designated as possibilities, and we'll need the town to approve which ones we will plant. But we will take that, we will take care of that before the end of summer. Finally, in closing, I just want to mention that I was moved actually by a line from Hildy Simons' last comment in her recent letter. And she wrote that, "We want to be good..." Oh, actually, there's something more. Well, I'll, I'll go this, sorry. You were almost thinking I was done, but... I'm going to go back to compatibility, because it's actually so important. So, let me go back to compatibility. One of the questions is, are we compatible with, with the current neighborhood? And in fact, the, the town already decided years ago that we are compatible in a residential neighborhood. We live in a residential neighborhood. We were zoned to live next to a single-family home, the Cohanes', and Kay Cohane is here tonight. So, we've already been zoned to be in a resident and next to a residential, a single-family residence. So, that seems like it's already been decided. We are only doing interior remodels with minimal changes to exterior buildings. The structures will look almost identical to how they do now, and we plan to maintain most of our current landscaping. The classroom was, will be used fewer than half the days of each year, and almost will always be unused in the evenings on school day, and on school, evenings of school days. They'll be closed on holidays, weekends, and summers. 5164 will look the same and be very quiet. And just so you can see the compatibility of the flow of children, right now, our existing lower elementary classrooms are, are right here.
You'll have to walk with the mic if you're gonna...
That's okay, I can point.
You're gonna have to...
Currently, the, the lower elementary classrooms are here, and the children are dropped off here in the morning for lower elementary and our primary classrooms. Our upper elementary classrooms are here, the children are dropped off here. The other children who are dropped off here are lower elementary children who have siblings. And that's, the, so the flow of, of drop-off goes primary and lower elementary here, upper elementary here. And existing after-school pickup is here for upper elementary and here for lower elementary and primary. When we rethink, when we reconfigure our campus, a few things change. The, the drop-off bulb expands, that can increase queuing by two cars. This is still, will just be for upper elementary classrooms. The drop-off and pickup will continue to be the same for primary and lower elementary. Now, the lower elementary children will walk along the BCDC path to get to their new classrooms. And right in, in our current configuration, after-school care is right here, close to 5164. In our new configuration, that after-school care will move all the way down here. So, all the noise that might be associated with after-school care now moved to the west side of campus. So, it's very, it's, the flow is very similar, but it makes things quieter for this side of campus, and is very compatible with our current parking and drop-off use. And then I do, I do promise, this is my last thing I want to say, just to quote from Hildy Simons' letter, that I was inspired when I read this. She, she wrote that, "We want to be good neighbors and will support some compromise that promotes neighborhood values." And what I just want to emphasize again is, that's why we're here. We are completely behind being part of this neighborhood, being contributive members of this neighborhood, and we stand ready to work with the town and our neighbors to find ways that we can improve our neighborhood even more. Whatever that might mean, we want to, we want to try to support that. We are here to answer your questions, and before that, Scott Hochschilder, our consultant, is going to just make a, a couple of minutes of a presentation. Thank you. And thank you again for your time tonight.
Thank you, Sam. Commission, my name is Scott Hochschilder. I'm a land use planning consultant. I've been advising the school particularly on the general plan and zoning issues. And I wanted to just make a, a real simple point, that the only reason we're applying for rezoning is because your general plan hasn't been implemented as it is required to be done under your implementation program, LU 2.7. And I just want to quote from that particular section. It says, "Residential districts shall provide for a range of supporting services to meet special community needs, such as schools." The general plan was recommended by your commission in 2009, adopted by the town council, and basically, the rezoning matter has already been decided by your general plan. As soon as you make your general plan consistent with the implementation, there won't be a need to rezone residential properties for school use. I also wanted to make one other point. You, your commission did recommend, and your council did approve, a rezoning of about seven acres at the Marin Country Day School. Those acres are directly adjacent to multiple residential housing at the Preserve, approximately 60 feet away from building one which has about 20 occupants. And I think it's, it shows yet again that not only has your general plan supported, not only has your commission supported it, not only has your council supported it, but they've recently supported the school use as a compatible use in a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sound presentation?
Yeah, please.
Hi, commissioners, my name is Ben Piper. I'm an acoustical consultant with Charles Saltor Associates. Our firm has worked on over 35 projects in the town of Cordera, as well as over 450 projects in Marin County. I did the noise assessment for this project. To summarize briefly, typical school noise assessments involve the analysis of potential noise increase, typically due to enrollment increase and the related traffic increase, and inevitably, the use of outdoor play areas that butt up against residential property. So, I was quite pleased to review this project, which does not propose an enrollment increase, does not have a related traffic increase, and proposes to use the new space adjacent to the residential property as two classrooms with a buffer zone that includes a zen garden and meditation space. Our analysis shows that the project will meet the city, the town noise element and noise ordinance requirements, and will not be a significant noise impact to the surrounding community. I understand in the previous meeting, there was some question about the length of the noise measurements conducted to determine the existing ambient noise environment. Typically, when determining the location and length of noise measurements, the first step is to review the requirements for those in the noise element and municipal code. In the absence of a measurement length requirement, the industry standard is a minimum 24-hour noise measurement. In this instance, the town exercised additional caution and requested a peer review from another acoustical firm. And so, we coordinated with them to determine the three locations along the proposed future property line, as well as the dates and times of measurement. Furthermore, if we can jump ahead to the last page of this, I'm sorry, I can do it. Furthermore, if we can jump ahead to the last page of this, I'm sorry. I can do it. I'd just like to briefly touch on the, the city property line noise requirement. At a residential property, the noise limit at the property line is 50 decibels. Where noise might be, might consist primarily of speech or music, there's a five-decibel penalty. So you reduce from 50 to 45 decibels. Since outdoor activity at the school does primarily consist of human voice, we applied that penalty. So we based our analysis on the most conservative, lower, lowest threshold of 45 decibels at the property line. And our analysis shows that based on the locations of the classroom and the setback of the outdoor decks, that the school will meet this 45-decibel criteria. We could conduct additional noise measurements, but if we measured quieter noises, ambient noise level out there, we would still implement the 45-decibel criteria. If we measured louder noise levels, then we could consider implementing a higher noise level criteria. But because we measured low enough noise levels, we would likely stick with the 45-decibel property line limit, which is the most conservative threshold. For, for reference, this, the next three graphs show the measured noise levels at locations L3, 4, and 5. These are all along the proposed property line at various setbacks from Paradise Drive. This is location L3, which is closest to Paradise. There are a few significant noise events, but none of them are associated with the school use. On the 25th of January, there was landscaping in the garden that consisted of leaf blowing and tree trimming. This was, that, that location is near the driveway to the existing property. A truck pulled in and some material was unloaded directly underneath the monitor at that peak. This is four jet aircraft flyovers that occurred at the site. So in working with our peer review, they requested that we remove, in calculating the ambient noise at the, at the property, they requested that we remove these spiked events. And in doing that, we come up with an average noise level at that location of 55 decibels. Moving further from Paradise, but still along the property line, we see the same noise events. We're still monitor, we're still measured. There was landscaping and jet aircraft flyovers. But noise from school activity limited to the daytime and this afternoon and this daytime varies between approximately 45 and 55 for an average of 50. And this is closest to the bay. Again, we get those two spikes from the landscaping and the jet aircraft flyovers. At this location, background noise is slightly elevated due to noise from the bay. Actually, the waves lapping on shore contribute to the noise, the ambient noise environment there, as well as school activity noise, which varies from roughly between 45 to 60 for an average of 53 decibels during the daytime. Again, that's removing these peaks. If we left the peaks in, the average noise level would be increased to approximately 60. That's essentially the information I have here is, just for reference, noise levels, common noise levels. This information is actually pulled from the Corte Madera noise element. It's easy to spout numbers, but not always clear what that means. So, you know, I'm prepared to field any questions regarding the noise or happy to...
A couple of questions, I think, from us for you might be in order here. So I know I have one or two. Phyllis, do you have any questions about the noise?
No.
Okay. Dr. Bundy?
One comment I was going to make is, the landscaping was not from the school. That was from another property?
Correct. My, my understanding is that garden exists as part of that residential property and it was occurring on the residential property that exists there as part of that, as part of the existing use, but not from the school.
And my understanding is Marin Montessori has gone to utilizing either electric or battery-powered landscaping equipment, maybe with the exception of chainsaws.
Okay. Nicola, do you have any questions?
Yeah. Can you go back to the site plan? Quick question on where you measured the...
Correct. We, we also measured along Paradise Drive, but...
Nicola, can you get your mic?
You didn't have any students there. So how would you be able to measure the...
Right. The purpose of these noise measurements are to determine, determine the existing ambient noise level at the property line. That is what sets the noise level criteria for the future use. We're, we're examining the, the, the noise impact of the current, the proposed use on the current environment. So we want to measure the current environment, which is a quiet environment. So we're analyzing what the proposed campus expansion, how that would increase the existing noise level. So we want to measure the existing noise level. The city's noise criteria is 45 decibels at that property line.
Okay. So why wouldn't you measure here? Maybe to see what is the current...
We're, we're trying to measure the impact on the nearest noise-sensitive receiver, which, if this project is approved, will be that residence.
Right. But wouldn't basically move the activity from here to here?
That's a bigger question, Nicola. And I, the fact is that they've said that the activity that occurs at the domes now will not occur on that other property. And I, from my experience with these studies, is that they're setting a parameter, right? For the, this, and that they're going to say they're going to hold to this parameter, regardless of whether there's students there or not. You're going to say that's what exists because that's the current condition and you will not exceed the current condition and therefore impact the neighbors any more than they're currently impacted by that noise.
Correct.
So that means that whatever you do on the expanded lot cannot exceed these noise parameters that exist now as an impact to the neighbor.
Correct, correct.
Thusly, but the activity that occurs over by the domes, I could hear in front of the home adjacent to the Simons there. And it was apparent. It happens with every school. You can hear it. But it was not, it was not as loud as 50-decibel voices. So, but I understand Nicola's point is that, you know, why not measure where kids are? But you're not going to have kids at that level. Yeah, right.
You're right. I completely understand. It makes sense.
We did measure along the, the current asphalt area in front of the domes to, to capture playground noise for reference, but we, we also measured at...
It makes sense. I understand perfectly. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Yeah. So, sorry, can you just explain then, so DNL was the level of reading, right? And can you just explain then why, why are those numbers all higher than 45? Am I just misunderstanding?
Sure. DNL is the average noise level over a 24-hour period.
Okay. And it included the spikes, which is why it's drawn higher?
Correct. Yes. And the city standard is the daytime average noise level. So we looked at the average noise level between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. That is the, reported as the LEQ, daytime LEQ.
Okay. So that's 50, 55. So you, I had the same exact question that Nicola had. So you did not take any readings along the current campus property line?
Correct.
Okay. And then the average at the point that's L1 was 67. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I don't have any other questions about the, the noise. Thanks.
All right. To my right.
I'm good.
Okay, Phyllis.
I just wanted to qualify something. The domes are not going to be used in this coming year and that they're going to be torn down next summer. Is a year... When are you planning on phase two?
The, the first phase will hopefully be next summer for 5164.
Right.
And then within the next couple of years when we have the...
Okay. But there will be a building or two to replace the domes when they're dead. A single building. So any of the quote-unquote "noise" that you hear around the domes, you would have noise when there's a new building. And I'm wondering why it wasn't measured. It wasn't as if it's going to be empty once the domes are torn down.
The one change, Commissioner McCall, is that the after-school care... The one change is that the after-school care, which is currently in the upper elementary classroom, will move to the farther side. So if there is after-school ambient noise here, that will be, that'll be on the, it'll be, have no...
Okay. Fine. Thank you.
Okay. So not that this is terribly important, but when I, when I look at your charts, and I do appreciate seeing these graphs because they explain a lot more than what we had before, is that at 6:00 a.m. every day, there is a spike over the average. So 6:00 to 7:00 a.m., before any school activity actually starts. So the ambient noise in the neighborhood is exceeding the average before the school is in session. And then by 4:00 in the afternoon, it has, by 6:00, 4:00, it drops off. By 6:00, yeah, by 6:00 it's below the average.
Some of these spikes are due to school activity noise, but some of them are also due to loud vehicle passed by, i.e. motorcycle and heavy vehicle.
Right. So I, in considering this from my perspective, the point would be that at that property line of the, the lower classroom, proposed lower classroom against the eastern property line, what address do you have to make sure that this noise level does not get over this mean level? And what can be done to even protect that further? What other measure could you put in place to shield, to drive down that average at that point, given that that's where kids are?
Yeah. We worked with the, the architect to develop a classroom deck layout and setback such that normal conversation levels at those classrooms will be far enough from the property line that the volume of normal conversation will be reduced to meet 45. Now, it, it is true that someone standing at the property line talking at an elevated volume for long enough could exceed the average noise level, daytime noise level. But the school has indicated that, A, outdoor lectures are not part of their curriculum. So that is not a component of, the elevated voice level associated with a lecture is not a component of, of the outdoor curriculum.
You know, as we look at the architecture, it's fine architecture with the deck oriented the way it is. It really works around the building. The problem is that it allows for the north side there to be used with a group of students in some way. I think that what we've heard is that we have the opportunity to condition the project for, in a number of ways, and noise being one of them, that if it exceeds us in any way, there has to be a solution to that and that we condition this, if we do look at it, that it's monitorable. It is continually monitored and that there is some manner of enforcement. And, and I don't, I don't know that there is a way of ensuring that it doesn't exceed it, except by saying shush to a bunch of students. And you know how well that works. So...
Yeah, the school has agreed to two years of sound monitoring.
It doesn't stop it from happening. So, you know, it, it needs to be a conscience and a ever-present effort. And I hate to do anything to the orientation of the deck such that students on the north side wouldn't be present. Look, it works really well, but I think that's something to consider.
Peter, they did move the deck. There is a new deck that moves the majority of the usage facing towards the school and not back. That's one of the external changes they made to the design.
Mind if I, I can speak to that?
Yeah, please.
Yeah. And, and maybe Phil can find a picture. And, and actually, maybe Michael would be the best person. He's the architect who did the redesign.
But you did change the orientation of the deck for that noise away.
And then we've also, before Michael speaks, we've agreed to...
Yeah. Well, this is, this is, I think I'm seeing in the plan what it is proposed to be. So please go ahead.
Well, can we go to a different slide? Yeah, that one's okay. We can use that one. So, so currently, so the Simons' property is right here. Currently, there's an existing deck that comes directly off of the building right here. There's also a trellis that's being removed. So that all goes away. What we've done to help mitigate sound is, you know, as you can see here, the deck is directed behind the existing building. And, you know, the activities, you know, as Sam's mentioned, I think in the previous planning commission, the activities of the school are directed towards the center of the eastern campus.
So I'm, I'm looking at the right plan then. And, and it is that width of deck along the side of the, north side of the building that would allow an aggregate number of kids to hang out, right? But, and they could make enough noise. That's all I'm saying, is that that's a place. And to rotate the deck even further so that simply a walkway would prevent that from occurring, it ruins the architecture of the deck, basically, to do that.
Yeah. It, it may be a little bit deceptive in that the, the space here is quite narrow. It's only about an eight-foot wide space. And the actual, you know, I think when the kids are outside, you know, any activity that does happen in very small groups would be on, on the western side of the deck here.
All right. I don't want to belabor this, so...
The story polls showed us when we were there where it was.
Yes. I do recall that the deck view, I do recall the deck view from the neighboring property. Yes. So, thank you. Do you guys have any other questions for the sound guys?
No.
No questions for Sam, but not the sound guys.
Okay. So some questions for Sam, you said, or for...
Yeah, for Sam.
Go ahead.
Hi.
Hi.
Can you, okay, I'm going to focus for a few minutes on parking and traffic. Can you just run us through again the number of spaces that you currently have and the number of full-time staff and administrators that are currently on campus? and the number of full-time staff and administrators that are currently on campus?
Yeah, I'm gonna look to thirty-seven. Thirty-seven current parking spaces. That'll go to forty after the project. And we have currently thirty full-time employees, thirty, did you ask for employees?
Yeah, no, between administrators and employees.
Faculty?
Faculty.
Thirty-nine? Forty-one, forty-one. Some of them are midday.
Okay. So, basically, anyone who's a visitor, there's, so you're still gonna be one parking space short. Right. There's your visitor. So, any visitors cannot park, there's no parking available, just because?
We are designating visitor parking lots, three visitor parking lots in the new plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, where do, where do your other staff members currently park then?
Most of them actually, in the pre-see study confirmed this, uh, will park, well, there's enough, there's adequate parking on campus. We have, we have midday employees, so some of the hours are different. In the event that they cannot find parking on the parking lot, maybe there are more visitors than expected, they'll park on Robin Drive.
Okay.
They'll tend to, they'll find other public parking.
Okay, got it. And have you guys looked at any other ways? I know you're adding the three spaces with the new, uh, with the, with the new, um, property. Have you guys looked at other ways? For example, and I guess this is a timing issue, but with your expanded drop-off bulb, is that construction gonna happen sooner rather than? It sounds like your geodome reconstruction may not happen for a few years, you said?
It could be, yeah, it's, it's the second phase, so it'll depend on, on, on when we finish the first phase.
Okay. So, is the expanded drop-off component also part of the second phase?
It's the second phase, yeah.
Okay, so that doesn't happen now, that's used?
Not in, not in the first phase.
Okay. Gotcha. And as part of phase two, could you consider, did you consider somehow expanding it even more to either allow for additional parking? Or could you move the classroom closer to the water at all? I'm, I'm just throwing out other things. And the reason is because part of our condition of approval, I think, for Marin Country Day was that they had to have at least one space for every employee, correct? Okay.
So, I think Peter could maybe speak to that. And the, and the, and the traffic and parking study did confirm, based on the town's stated conditions, we meet.
Right, you meet the current.
Yeah, that we meet the current conditions, yeah.
Conditions, which I understand. But then, I think at the town council with MCDS, they went above and beyond that and said, you need to actually have one space per person that you expect to be on campus. So, maybe something that we revisit.
Would you like, Peter, to speak to architectural possibilities?
Sure. If there is an architectural possibility, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, I mean, we've looked at this and there, there are, there was a possibility of introducing additional spaces by parking that island there. But, it makes the, um, queuing unsafe. So, basically, you would park in here. And for all the trouble that that takes, you really only get two more spots. And so, there may be some other places we could stuff them in, but we're really challenged. And the business of, you know, having flow here interrupted by building parking onto it was complicated. So, we've certainly looked for it. We could, you know, maybe squeeze one or two more under duress, but it's not ideal.
And could you consider expanding the drop-off area as part of phase one versus postponing that component to phase two?
I'm, I'm not a construction expert, but I don't see why not. I don't know. Do we have, uh?
Commissioner Friedman?
Alice.
It's, it's, it's included in the project description as being part of phase one, the bulb out.
Oh, it is.
Oh, it is?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought Sam just said it was phase two.
Yeah, I, it, it is phase two. Yeah, the, I think the domes are in the way. They basically occupy the space of the expansion. So...
It looks like the expansion goes...
Yeah, see, they're, they're, right? They're so close here, that you can't really get by them.
Okay. Maybe that's...
But, I mean, it could be a substandard condition.
I think that's something that obviously you guys have heard a lot about, right? And that's, I think, one of the biggest mitigants you've put out there as helping facilitate better traffic flow is the expanded drop-off area in this circular area. So, to then say that, you know, if we were to consider an additional conditional use permit and the change in zoning, that that phase of it isn't gonna happen for several years, I think people are gonna have a hard time accepting that, since that's a big piece of what you're suggesting as a mitigant.
Yeah.
So...
And I would say, you know, I think from, from the, again, going back and just, we can confirm, but the, at least from our understanding, that the project description actually includes it in phase one. So, we would be, we, to accommodate that, I think you could request that staff include that as a condition of approval.
Yeah. I would certainly say, I would, my impulse would, of course, want to be to accommodate that, not fully understanding the architectural impact.
Okay. So, I think we'd wanna get clarity on that.
Okay, so my architect just said, yes, we can.
Great.
So, we can do that. So, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, that's, uh, over here on my right.
On the parking, you have thirty-seven parking spaces. When you move the classes over to the house, you'll have forty.
Correct.
You have forty-one employees total.
Currently. Is that right, Deb?
Is that correct?
It's, it sounds high. So, between thirty-nine and forty-one right now. I'm sorry, we don't have the exact number.
Somebody cornered me in Nugget Market to complain. What else? That the school has, uh, volunteer aides in each classroom who are there on a daily basis. Is that true?
I'm sorry, you, you seem to have been getting so, so much misinformation. I apologize for, we have no vol...
Well, this is why I'm asking.
I'm glad, no, we don't have any volunteer aides.
Okay, because I was gonna say...
Such a position does not exist.
That would be like having...
Yeah.
More employees and you need more parking spaces for the day.
We don't, we don't have any of those.
That's why I was asking. I'm very happy to hear that. That was my question going on with the other parking numbers.
Gotta, gotta watch out for that Nugget Market.
No, it's Nugget this time.
Yeah, we know what kind of people hang out over there. So, um, we're getting late here, but I do wanna just point out a couple of things before. If anybody has not fallen asleep yet, they can get up and public comment in a minute. That, um, you guys wrote a separate note that responded to a number of, uh, comments sent in. I think that is back there on the table for everyone to see. And they addressed, uh, a number of, uh, points of the other things brought out, including the landscaping, et cetera. I brought this up with the planning director, um, because so many people seem to walk up and down Paradise and look at the cars and say, there's too many cars, or there's a bad car there. Who are those cars belonging to? So, you guys are starting this coordination with Marin Mon, uh, Marin Country Day School. So, it's, I, incumbent upon you guys to have a coordinated effort here. And I said, what about having a tag system? That you tell all of your teachers, hang a tag in the windshield. Then, somebody who's walking up and down can say, that's a teacher. And if the parents can follow orders, they would have one, right? And then, if Marin Country Day did the same, we'd be able to say, geez, Marin Country Day has got eight cars parked out there. Marin Montessori has got four parked out there. The rest of these guys are who knows who, or they're hikers or something. It's kinda like, this, right now, it's a, it's a, a walking tour of the neighborhood that, that a lot of people say, somebody's responsible for, they don't know who. And how can we sort of get a handle on that? As part of the town study, would you guys say, hand out tags to teachers and say, hang these puppies in your window? So, people know who you are that are parking out there.
I think it's a great idea. One of the plans we have this year, actually, has gone out in registration, is that all incoming families or re-enrolled families will be now giving us their, their make and model and license plate numbers of their cars. So, we can better monitor, um, what our families are doing, but I think a tag system is a great idea.
It's a perception.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and, and then, whether it's the town walking out there and auditing, or it's a neighbor doing their own audit, then somebody says, gosh, these are people that, we don't know who they are.
And we have a good relationship with the new director of, of safety at Marin Country Day School. I think Spencer, he'd be, I think he'd be in favor.
You know, you could use a sticker, because people forget to put out their tag. You could put a sticker that they could just put.
Whatever it works, an ID system of some kind would be a big, you know? I don't know. I, I'd like to see something like that. So, um, there's some conditions if we get to approval. But I would like to say, if you guys have anything else to say, um, please do so. Otherwise, at this late hour, we'll go to a public comment.
Do not.
So, you are a public commenter?
I am public commenter number one.
Chair, Chair Chase, just a point of order. At eleven o'clock, the commission has to do a vote to extend for each thirty-minute period. So, at midnight, I'd suggest that you may wanna consider that to extend for a period of time.
Yeah, I read the other day, it said, we go to, at the meeting, it said midnight. Yes, but now it's midnight, so do we wanna go to?
Twelve-thirty.
Twelve-thirty, okay. Got your nodos? All right.
All, all in favor?
All in favor.
All so hard at, all these people came out here and they're still here at midnight.
Yeah, so, thank you.
And they waited three hours to come.
Go for it.
Thank you.
So...
My name's Robert Simon, um, fifty-one fifty-six Paradise Drive. I'm speaking on behalf of Hildy Simon, who I believe didn't get a chance to speak, um, last time. And I've practiced her two-page essay, and it takes four minutes. So, these are the Cliff Notes. She starts by, uh, thanking Mr. Shelby, or am I saying that correctly? Shapiro, forgive me. Just in Ramon Sori's compliance with eliminating some ugly and appropriate palm trees, the corridor to Mount Tam. They, they see that the school is making a real effort to reduce its impact on us as neighbors, and we appreciate this very much. We are encouraged by the fact that the school cannot increase its enrollment past two hundred and thirty-two students. If in its wisdom, the planning commission winds up approving zoning change, we would hope to be good neighbors on the best terms, to echo that point. She also speaks more so towards the Ramon Sori family and that, um, we don't disagree that Ramon Sori is a great school. I'm an alumna, uh, class of eighty-nine, from Ms. Pam's class. More on that later. But, so, just to get to her point, um, she discusses change. And just in hearing your proceedings previously on hotels and awnings, um, change is kind of inevitable. So, in order to get some use out of this relentless process called growth, my mom would like to ask the commission to step to the plate. If there will be a rezoning, at least give us and our neighbors a decent sidewalk with a real curb along the unkempt weed patch in front of fifty-one sixty-four and beyond to the west. Give us a safe way to cross the street and/or ride a bike to town. Get MMS to the table, discuss how to diminish the angst of traffic in a corridor, which I believe you guys have done. The long planter in front of the school could provide room for a bike path and a sidewalk. Together with our neighbors, we can offer both the school and the town of Corder Medera quid pro quo of our own. Make it safe for us or no deal for you. And your business as usual. Please plan for our safety and the town instead of merely reacting to change. Requested by business that just, requested by the business that just needs a little bit more space. In summation, we do not want or welcome a zoning change at fifty-one sixty-four. We will not stand against our neighbors and their opposition of this project as a matter of principle and personal integrity. However, we want to be good neighbors and will support some compromise that promotes neighborhood values. Now, um, I have something to say, and that's, when I went to Ramon Sori, the three things I remember learning first were trust, patience, and, I forgot the third. Man, trust, I, I... Yeah, courtesy, let's just call it courtesy. So, um, trust. I trusted Ms. Pam. I trust the board of commissions to make appropriate decisions. And I trust Ramon Sori to uphold true to their word. I also trust my parents to look out for their neighborhood and the family. Patience. This is brand-new. I will be your future neighbor, and you are going to be my parents' current neighbor. So, let's wait a minute, see how things air out, see how the traffic settles. And, you know, what you do with the current property now, it should have been considered when you purchased it. And for, well, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, first of all, good morning. I thought I was gonna be able to say good evening, but I'll, I'll start with good morning. My name is Andy Ehrenberg. I was here last time with my daughter, Abigail, who is a sixth grader. Given it's graduation tomorrow, and she's gotta give a speech, and it's now ten after twelve. Unfortunately, you got the, the worst of the two speakers of the family. But I, I do wanna thank you for your patience in going through this. I know this is a lot of work for all of you, and, and do appreciate it. I obviously support the school. I've had two of the thirty-two kids there. Now, with my oldest one graduating tomorrow to go to Tam as a freshman in the fall, and I'm excited about that, given the education that she's been lucky enough to have at Ramon Sori. I'm also very fortunate to live in a community that values education. You know, if you think about this neighborhood, we've got some tremendous choices. And we've got neighbors who really support education. I think about Measure D in twenty-fourteen, where this community, by over seventy percent, agreed to a nineteen-million-dollar bond measure. And they've invested. They've invested in the Cove. They've invested in the Eau Commiss. MCDS has invested in their property. And we too want the opportunity to invest in ours. This is an expensive property, as you know. It is not affordable housing. It is one of the most expensive properties to go on the market. And we, as a community, are committed to invest in our children and invest in future children for Corder Medera, for Larkspur in Marin. And I would ask for your support in helping us make that investment as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here so late. My name's Kay Cohane, and, um, I was the former owner of five-one-six-four Paradise Drive. And, um, I've been thinking a lot about this. And, um, we always took our neighbors into consideration. In fact, when we wanted to rebuild our house, Hildy and Jim Simon asked us not to put a second story on their, on our house so that we wouldn't block their view, which we did not. And, you know, as I go, as I went up Paris, Par, up and down Paradise Drive all those years, Paradise Drive is full of schools. It has the Cove School, Marin Country Day School, the Alaire School off to the side, the Mountain School. There are, in every community in this country, schools are part of the warp and weft of neighborhoods. They're part of residential neighborhoods everywhere we go, because that's who they serve. They serve the children of the neighborhoods. So, it's only natural for them to be part, just as many churches are part of residential neighborhoods. So, when we sold our home, we weren't selling our home to a new school that was going to create more traffic. We, in fact, when we bought our hu, bought that place at five-one-six-four twenty-five years ago, Marin Montessori wanted to purchase that property then, because they wanted to expand then and have that property, but they could not afford it. So, at this time, they were able to come up with the money to afford this. And I would really encourage you to approve this zoning change, because we're talking about a zoning change of eighty foot, eighty feet. We're not charged, we're not talking about a complete change for another school to move in there. I don't feel that this will change the flavor of our neighborhood at all. So, that, that's what I wanted to leave you with tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kay.
Good morning. My name is Dylan Simons. I'm a parent at Marin Montessori School. We're just about to move into our eighth year there. I've been asked by proxy to, uh, read a letter, uh, from Linda Tull, who's a longtime Corder Medera resident and longtime, um, Marin Montessori parent, technically former parent. But I wanna make a few comments of my own, first if I may. I wanna start by saying that, oddly enough, I wrote my graduate thesis on the social and economic underpinnings of community activism in the citing of municipal solid waste landfills or dumps. So, I've spent more than my share of time, um, sitting in stackable chairs in, in town halls in Pennsylvania and around the northeast. While I conducted my research, I developed a deep respect, um, for the role of zoning boards, for town councils and commissions like this one. And, uh, also, the overwhelming value of the public hearing process in general. So, um, I appreciate the opportunity, not only to hear from the wide range of comments that I picked up, uh, during this project in the last, uh, two meetings, but also the opportunity to speak to you now. My wife and I live next door to, uh, a public elementary school in Mill Valley. And, um, that is a far more challenging arrangement than the neighbors of Marin Montessori will face. Mainly because the public elementary schools in Mill Valley, and I suspect that's the case in other towns in this area, are open to the public, and they tend to be used, uh, day and night during off... to the public, and they tend to be used day and night during off-hours. Marin Monosori School is very quiet in off-hours and on weekends, and I think, as Mr. Cahane said in his previous testimony, if only he could live next door to a school like Marin Monosori School, wherever he lived, he'd be happy. So, from Linda Toll to the Corder Madera Planning Commission, my name is Linda Toll. I'm writing this letter as an MMS neighbor for over 18 years, and as a parent of two former Marin Monosori students. I strongly feel that we need to support the rezoning project that MMS seeks for the following reasons. As a neighbor within close proximity of MMS, I support the rezoning project, and I'm not concerned about the impact on parking or noise. Schools are quiet in the evenings and summertime. They also bring greater security to neighborhoods. As a parent of two former longtime students at the school, I can tell you there's no community more respectful of its neighbors than Marin Monosori School. My husband was on the board. I was the head of the PTA for years, and all parties consistently agreed on the importance of being good neighbors, not only to nearby residents, but also the broader Corder Madera community. I'll make one last point in representing her.
We have a copy of those letters, just so you know.
That's right, okay.
He's reading it, yeah. So.
I'll leave it at that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Good evening, Commissioner. I'm going to hand up a couple of documents that I'm going to refer to, if that's okay.
What's your name?
My name is Scott Colleton, and I'm a parent in the MMS community. Thank you. Good morning, and thank you again for your thoughtful consideration of the important issues here before you. The documents that I handed to you reference some property sales, and I'll get to that in a moment. But first, I want to just provide a couple of my own comments, which were, MMS is really a shining light in this community, where schools are an essential fabric in our world. Not only is MMS a pillar of education, it is a melting pot for families and the backbone of many young families' lives, and that's why there's such a large turnout so late in the evening of MMS supporters here in this room. We've heard a number of concerns raised at this meeting last about our project. You know, I think we've spent, we've discussed at length parking and noise, and I feel like, you know, there's a lot of productive conversation around those. One issue that came up in conversation at the last commission meeting on this topic had to do with concerns around property values. We should all be so lucky to own property next to MMS. The facts here are quite important. In the year leading up to MMS's purchase of 5164, there were 71 two-bedroom or more single-family residents sold within Corder Madera. Of those, 5164 Paradise was the second highest-priced transaction. But more importantly, of the 10 most expensive properties of those 71, 5164 Paradise was the highest sales per square foot by over 30% relative to the rest of the top 10 sales there. So, I think that the concern about the impact on property value being next to a school generally, or MMS in particular, is one where the facts are quite overwhelming. Concerns around parking noise, property values are understandable, but the fact is that this project protects or improves the existing conditions on all fronts, and while responsive to the neighbor's concern, also supports the school's educational mission. And I urge you to vote for the future of MMS, and in doing so, to strengthen the broader community you support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, flying commissioners. My name is Felix O'Young, and my wife and I are parents of two wonderful children at Marin Monosori, completing our sixth year at this school. My wife just finished her term as the president of the Parents Association, and I'm a trustee on the board. And like many MMS parents here and at the school, we are very involved with the school and in the community at large. While we live in a townhouse in Terellinda, my family certainly considers ourselves to be extended members of Corder Madera. My son had two piano teachers, both taught out of their homes in Corder Madera, and he played his piano recitals at ages. We've pulled our share of the invasive plants in Ring Mountain, and we, like many others, frequent the Nugget, the Pet Club, and Cafe Verde regularly. But for the request tonight, I'd like to make three points. First, the school, schools are an essential part of a vibrant residential neighborhoods. If you look at the Cove School, or where we're from in Terellinda, Vallecito, and Mary Severa, you'll see that they're all embedded within neighborhoods surrounded by single-family homes. I think the general plan recognizes the important nature, this important nature, and thus allows for school use in residentially zoned areas. Second, I think there are many impacts schools have beyond traffic. Are there, is there traffic? Yes. I think during certain times of the day and certain times of the year, but it's not continuous, and it's contained in small windows. Again, if you look at the Cove School, the cars turning into Golden Hind or into San Clemente Park, that gets backed up, but it gets cleared within a few minutes. But schools do add value to this community, and quite literally, as Scott said earlier, great schools all over South Marin drive up property values, educated children, and are a key part of this area. Third, the request that MMS is proposing will be an improvement over existing conditions. As a small school, MMS impact is relatively small, in my opinion, and we already have an incredibly efficient drop-off and pickup system. This current request will improve the, over the existing conditions by adding the parking and increasing the queue space, whether it's now or in a few years that's available, which is definitely a benefit to the neighborhood. Stepping back, there was recently a single-family home built on Paradise near Mariner Green. So, aside from the happy new homeowner, what benefit that that one home contribute toward Corder Madera? And what that benefit, and how do you weigh that benefit against the benefit of improving a high-quality school? Marin Monosori has been a member of the Corder Madera community for decades, and has established a reputation as one of the best Monosori schools in the nation, and is now looking to improve its educational services. One teacher calls the education nurturing cosmic agents of good, and I hope you find that that's a beneficial use of the 36,000 square foot of land here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the time. Tony Anziano, Ten Paloma Drive, Corder Madera, 26-year resident of Corder Madera. And as you heard me say last time, I had three children go through Marin Monosori from pre-K through sixth grade, and I absolutely fully support the project. I just wanted to follow up a little bit on the sales data you were presented with, because that's responsive to one of the concerns I know that's been expressed in some of the correspondence, that somehow the expansion of the school into this area is going to devalue property values in the area. And the sales price that you've seen in that data actually represents a sales price paid by the school, but probably of even more significance is what you heard from Jack Cahane at the last hearing, which is that they actually received an offer above the school's purchase price prior to the school purchasing the property from a private buyer, and that was subsequently withdrawn due to a disclosure that had nothing to do with the school. So, it's pretty clear in the private market, from a very, very significant comp, that the presence of the school is not impacting property values in any way, shape, or form in that area. And sort of on a related note, I've seen in some of the correspondence, there have been some concerns expressed about the removal of a house from the housing stock in Corder Madera and the potential impact of that. You know, this is above-market, above-moderate-income property. Clearly, the removal of one house of this type is not going to impact the housing stock. Your own housing element indicates that the preservation goal for above-moderate housing is zero, because you're not concerned with that. It's very easy to replace this kind of housing. And in fact, in terms of the allocated needs that are put out by AAG, it's been pretty easy for Corder Madera to replace above-moderate-income-level housing. So, that, it's just not an issue. And even, just wanted to touch on those two. Thank you for your time at this very late hour.
I appreciate your comment. Thank you, Tony.
Good evening. My name is Anna Shimko, and I am a mother of two almost sixth graders and also a land use lawyer. As such, I want to focus on just a couple of the legal points here. As you know, one of the key findings you need to make for the conditional use permit is that the proposed use as conditioned will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. The evidence abundantly supports the fact that the very minimal change will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, and indeed will advance those causes, even though there is no advancement legally required. This is not a vacant piece of land. The question before you is not whether the school should exist at all or in this location. Those fundamental decisions were made very long ago, and then over time, with requisite conditional use permit amendments and concomitant town findings to support those. The town decided that the school is appropriate and a compatible use in the neighborhood. The school has relied upon and invested in those prior findings and approvals. What's before you now is merely a discrete decision about whether or not to allow the school to move over by one parcel line. The testimony of the Cohanes echoes and proves that allowing the school to be next to a residential use is appropriate. Surely, the wisdom of the prior town decision cannot turn on the identity of the adjacent residential user. In fact, the, it makes no sense to me to be overly concerned, for instance, about the noise that the Simons might experience, because the Cohanes have been experiencing noise, and they have been fine with it, and it has not been an impact. Improvements, in fact, will be made, because the upper elementary drop-off area will be further from the adjacent residential use. The outdoors play area will be further from the adjacent residential use, and all of the active uses will be further from the adjacent residential use. I wanted to touch briefly on the housing element and any concern about removing a property from being devoted to housing. Indeed, your housing element adopted in 2016 focuses on the need for multifamily housing and the need for affordable housing, senior housing, disabled housing. The bottom line is on page 46 of the housing element, showing that the regional housing needs assessment and the assigned number and income category of units that the town needs to supply. Only 24 above-moderate units are necessary, but there were 165 of those under construction or approved at the time the housing element was approved. So, your housing element says that no more above-moderate units are necessary. In fact, you've possibly oversupplied those by 141. So, removing the unit is not a concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to?
Am I allowed to use my minute I didn't use?
No.
No?
No, I think you've made a very good case. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that has not spoken that would like to speak? Slow riser. Are you, no?
She's just changing seats.
All right. Thank you, then. We will, we'll close this public comment section of this. And in theory, with five minutes left in our meeting here.
Do you want to vote to go an additional 15 minutes rather than a half an hour so we can?
Okay. Would you propose that?
I propose we add an additional 15 minutes onto our meeting time at 12:30.
Okay. Is there a second and a vice vote, voice vote of aye?
Jennifer, can you do it?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So be it. So, after hearing that, do any of the commissioners have anything that they need to ask of staff at this point?
No, not for me.
Okay.
No.
All right. So, to attempt to expedite our decision-making here, I'm going to make some statements and ask you guys to tell me your response to this. So, I mean, we're faced with the decision of whether to change the zoning for this property, whether or not this, it should be expanded. That's really our issue here, right? The traffic has concerns that come with it, and they've done some work on that, and we can add mitigations to this. So, my fundamental question to you is, do you believe that this should be extended to these lots? Niccolo.
Make it fast. Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Dr. Bundy?
Yes, I believe it should be permitted.
Okay. So, with that said, I think that we've heard reasons for conditioning such an approval, because I am also in assent of that. And I think that the first thing that I can point to in some of the neighbor comments that's easily identifiable is the landscape plan, and there are things that we have seen in the Marin Monosori response that they would then add to their plan. So, where we are right now, let me back up one step and just say that we can direct the staff to draft a resolution with findings and conditions of approval recommending that the town council approve the application. So, that's really where we are. And one of them would be a landscape plan that is fully developed. So, Phil just pointed up there, these are the design review findings, and if there's any of these that you cannot find, then, then we have to stop and consider what that is. But I personally don't find any reason not to make these findings. Niccolo?
I concur with you, Peter. I mean, yeah, same.
Okay.
I can make all the findings, and the staff has prepared the guidelines very clear.
Right. Would you agree, Jennifer?
Yes, I can make the designer findings.
Dr. Bundy?
Yes, I can make the findings.
Okay. So, I'm going to rattle these off, and then I would like you guys to ask or suggest other conditions of approval.
These are the conditions?
Yes. So, we've got the landscape plan. We've got the sound review system that they've agreed to. And essentially, Marin Monosori has got a number of elements in their notations there that they've agreed to do that are in the memo of today, I believe, or was it yesterday? Two days ago. Right.
Last minute to that sound.
Yeah, two days. So, they've got this plan. Let's see. I think that the traffic management is a key issue here, and we've got to enforce it. And so, there's a couple of ways we can do it, and they've agreed to the reporting, they've agreed to the monitors outside, and I would also suggest that as permits come up for issuance or renewal, that they must show compliance, and that the planning department has the option to stop a application if there is not compliance with some of the conditions or some of the elements that have been discussed or they've agreed to do. So, there seems to have been a fair amount of discussion in the past about whether or not the school is complying with conditions or agreements, and I would like to find a way to put an end to those kinds of issues that come up repeatedly, right? And if they have to produce these biannual reports, and that before they go into Phase II, they have to comply with all of this traffic and sound mitigation. Read.
Biannual or annual?
Or semi-annual.
Semi-annual is what I'm trying to say, yes.
Twice a year.
I think, can we add to that, too, in terms of, it speaks to in here, you know, doing the monitoring once all of the projects are completed at both Marin Monosori, Marin Country Day, and I don't know if we wrap the preserve when that comes back to us as well, but that could be now several years away if we're talking about several phases for each of these schools. So, I think maybe there has to be something that's more immediate or, you know, starting in 2017. And then also, you know, how do we compel Marin Monosori to work with the other schools to, and probably the town and public works, to develop and implement traffic calming measures, whether that's, maybe they need a signal at Robin Drive, maybe they need flashing, you know, pedestrian signs, maybe we need, you know,
Some of that.
I don't know, I don't know what the right measure is, but I'm concerned about I don't know, I don't know what the right measure is, but I'm concerned about the fact that the implementation could be years away, when I think that that's been something that's come up, and it's going to come up again with the preserve discussion.
We've included as part of our draft conditions, condition number three, that explains exactly that, essentially that they'll coordinate with Marin Country Day School and pay their fair share of whatever the, whatever the cost of improvements is. I mean, if that's kind of what you're addressing.
Right. So the issue that I had with that was that it shall be completed within six to 12 months of the completion of both the MMS project and the MCDS project. And I think now the dates on those project completions are years away.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would encourage the commission to be as specific as you want, and tell us what you want us to do, because the, yeah, the phasing of both projects is not precise.
Well, why don't, yeah, why don't we take a stab at, I think I understand, your concern is that it's just pushed very far off potentially, and it's also linked to a project at Marin Country Day that they don't control, and so you go on to something more near-term and specific in terms of what?
Yeah, and if Marin Montessori needs to be the first mover to work with the town to correct where, like, the most recent accident happened, which I know you guys want the same thing. You want it to be safe for the people that are dropping off students, you want it to be safe for your students. So this is like a common goal that you guys share with the residents in the area, the bikers, the pedestrians, everyone. So I'm trying to figure out the clearest way to compel the town
Okay.
to put funds towards this and Marin Montessori.
Okay.
So, well, the scope of the study shall be reviewed by the town, so Marin Montessori is contributing to the cost of the joint traffic study.
Right, but this is just the study.
And then?
And then the improvements, yes.
Right. And then that, there is no reference to when a completion date might be, it just says that within six to 12 months of completion of both. So it does run in perpetuity until the completion occurs.
And Sam said he wasn't even sure when the phase two would be done.
I mean, one of the things that I think is going to help most significantly is when MCDS is done with their gravel 50-car additional parking spaces. So maybe that's the trigger, because hopefully
Be more specific to that.
That has the biggest sort of like immediate impact. While it's nice that you guys are going to add three spots, that's not going to change the overall feel of how many cars are on Paradise Drive. So maybe we, and that, you know, so I don't know how we can affect that at this point, but what I heard from Phil today was that that project should be complete over the summer. So do we start this monitoring in September, once school's back in session, and that's the appropriate trigger date, unless anyone has an issue with that?
Or you, I might recommend, just because, just to get the biggest bang out of your buck in your traffic study, wait for Marin Country, Marin Country Day to put in their gravel lot, and wait for Marin Montessori to do phase one.
Phase one is a year from now they're going to start that.
Well, they'll start this summer.
You said next summer.
Can we ask when phase one is?
You know, we should.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll come back with.
How about we try to come back with a draft, some options, we can maybe draft a couple and?
I think you guys understand the?
I think so, yeah.
Peter?
Yeah.
In addition to the traffic management, can we also do parking management?
Yes, well, I think that?
Separate, separate from, I mean, the traffic is moving, the parking is staying still.
It's part of it.
And I think it's important, the point you brought up, though, as they say, I would use stickers instead of tags, because people forget their tags, stick a sticker in the window and it stays there all year. But, and an agreement that there will not be parking by staff on Paradise Drive.
That's, and that's already actually part of the TD. I mean, it's already, would be a condition of approval already.
But I like the idea of what Peter said about in some way tagging the car, so you know who is parking.
There's, they have a director of parking to monitor and address parking and traffic issues, a parking attendant shall be on duty at all highly attended events. So there's, there is an effort there, and then there is the quarterly report to the planning department that comes out of the meetings that they have with MCDS. So there is some reporting to these guys about what occurs in the traffic management, but to the point of what's happening with parking. We can say traffic and parking
Okay.
to do that. And that report then would go directly to staff.
I just don't want us to worry about, you know, how fast cars are going and not worry about what happens.
But that brings up the next thing, which is this, the whole plan for Paradise Drive right there, and that is really in the town's control, and all we can do is say to Public Works that we would like the study to include the sidewalk and the option of a light and et cetera on Paradise Drive. We, I mean, that's in the works. She has to find the time, the money, and the person to do that, but we can't
Condition.
We can't condition the project for that. So.
I think you think you're also recognizing this will go to town council as a recommendation. You can
Yes.
sort of include some recommendations to the town council regarding such things.
And that said, then, that that recommendation would be the completion of a study and implementation of a pathway on this side of Paradise Drive, and the study and impact of a traffic light and/or a.
I mean, yeah, you know, there was, and maybe this is what you're referring to, I'm not sure, but there was the first comment there tonight to talk about the sidewalk in front of this property that is going to be included in potentially some of Montessori School.
Yeah.
You know, that's something to consider. If you want to direct us to sort of research that some more, I mean, we do have, as part of all our, any new application for property, we will consider, especially where there aren't current sidewalks, if it's appropriate from a town engineering standpoint, that that could be included as part of the project.
So that would be a study issue for you guys to look at, see if it fits, and work with Marin Montessori to see if it can go on that lot.
Yeah, I mean, part of the Montessori property does have a sidewalk currently.
Yeah, blocked it, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So let's, let's put that into the effort. What else do you guys want to add to potential conditions?
I don't know if it's a condition per se, but what we talked, what I mentioned before of, if there's a way to consider an additional space, or if they're dedicating three spaces to visitor parking, that they have the same requirement that MCDS was required, which is one space per full-time employee.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know that that's a condition, but something that you guys can.
Yeah, that can certainly be added to the condition, but keep in mind, staff levels may change.
Right.
They want to
Right.
Just say provide.
Okay.
And then there was the one
Next number of parking spaces?
Discussion about the phase one, having the expanded cul-de-sac, which I think we discussed earlier tonight.
Yeah, making that clear, that that's part of phase one.
Phase one, and that at phase two, then there is a review of all of the conditions to make sure there's compliance.
I guess the only other thing that you guys had brought up in your staff report was that there was this parental contract that you couldn't figure out if it was, if they were being held accountable, or how they were accountable.
Yeah, and I think this is a good point, because, I mean, generally, we don't, once it's a, you know, we're not sort of getting rid of prior conditions of approval that were already required previously, unless explicitly that's intended as part of this approval. So those things still, and I think we talked about, they still live, all those still remain, and if there are concerns about how to, frankly, you know, and I think, Sean, when you read some of these, you do think about how do you enforce such a thing, or how do you even implement, what does that look like? So maybe it is worthwhile to
Maybe it's just a father, Sean, for you to have with, to discuss.
I, yeah, I mean, if it's a, if it's a, if it's a pass condition that is unable to enforce, I should, I would think staff should, you know, evaluate and determine whether we want that condition to be removed, or we want it to remain or modified.
Right.
And if the applicant wants
I mean, the two that were noted
Wants to weigh in.
Were the, were the, yeah, the parent contract.
In the beginning, yeah.
And the second was, so pursuing the, aggressively pursuing carpooling. You know, I think those may be, you know, especially carpooling, we're all, that's obviously something to encourage, it's a question of how do you do that, and what does that look like?
Right.
And the other one, I don't know the details of it, actually, but that sounds
And I don't, yeah, maybe that's something you guys
Yeah, we'll look at it.
All right. Well, that said, I don't know if we're, we're not making a motion here, but you've got it all down, so that you know what to come back to us with. We're all in agreement, I think, up here as to what you've got written down, and what you'll come back with the draft, which we can review and discuss. So.
Do you want to continue this to a date certain, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the, and the date, two weeks?
Two weeks.
Just want to make sure.
See no reason why not, right? Everybody say aye.
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 Aye. All right. Thank you very much.
Would you like a motion for adjournment?
Yes.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay.
Aye.